Aye.
All opposed. Any abstentions? Thank you, we are now in regular session. At the end of closed sessions, we must certify them. Be it resolved that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements, and only such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed session. Is there a motion to certify the closed session?
Don't move.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Parker, may I have a roll call vote?
May I? Mr. Cliss?
Yes.
Dr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Again, thank you all for being here. We have a large crowd today. We will try to be as expeditious as possible. I do want to, as we do each and every board meeting, open with a moment of silence and reflection, followed by a pledge of allegiance to our country and our flag. I know that many of us come today with deeply burdened hearts, deeply burdened souls. We are concerned about national events. We are concerned about local events. We have a lot to think about and a lot to consider. I want us to, in this time, consider how we can be respectful of each other and work together as a community to deal with situations out of our control and eloquently, fairly address situations that are within our control. Conflict sometimes reminds me of the story of a father who was discipling his two sons that kept fighting. And he gave them each a bundle of sticks, and he said, "Break these sticks." And they couldn't break that bundle of sticks. They hit it over their legs and their knees, and they hit it over a table or whatever piece of wood they could find, and they couldn't break that bundle. He then unbound the bundle, and he handed them the individual sticks. And he said, "Now break them." And they easily snapped each and every stick. We are stronger when we work together. It is okay to disagree, it is wonderful to disagree. But I ask that we consider each other as community members and as neighbors as we go through these discussions. Like I said, we always start with a moment of silence and reflection. And today I want to ask each of us, as we do that, to consider three things that you are grateful for. Three things that you are blessed in your life to have. And I think you can probably come up with many more than three. I'm going to offer one. That we have the opportunity to gather in this forum and have these types of discussions. That is a blessing for which we cannot be more, we have to be thankful for that. So I ask you to consider that. Please join me in a serious moment of reflection and silence as we consider the day going forward. I thank you for that time. Now I'm going to ask if Supervisor Nicely will lead us as we pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we'll begin with Agenda Item Number Two. And I would like to ask members of staff to come forward for our introduction and recognitions. Building and Grounds and Maintenance will go first. Mr. Edwards, if you could come forward, please, and introduce your folks.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Tom Edwards, Maintenance Director. I am here to introduce Ty Horton. He started here September 2nd and has previously worked as a special ed teacher and also as a personal trainer. He currently coaches his kids with Bodatac Parks and Rec. And so in the past few weeks, Ty has hit the fields, running in the mowers, cleaning fields, working in our parks, spent morning cleaning up mulch beds and trimming trees at Eagle Rock Library. And every one of the team members that has worked with him has come back to me with great praise. So I would like to introduce Ty Horton as our new team member.
Welcome, thank you. We're so pleased to have you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
No problem.
Is Shante here? There you are, I couldn't find you, girl. Come on down here, you've got three. Shante Wade from Parks and Rec. To the podium.
Good afternoon. Victor couldn't be here with us today, so as the Recreation Manager, I get the joy of introducing to you our new Senior Van Transport Program staff. We're excited to welcome Jennifer Marks, part-time, to the Bodatac County Senior Transport Program. Jennifer recently moved from New Jersey, where she was running her own business while supporting seniors and individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. She has also worked in education, healthcare, and as a direct support professional, given her a strong background in patient care, transportation, and assisting others with daily needs. Jennifer's compassion, reliability, and dedication to serving people make her a valuable addition to our team. We are also pleased to welcome Jared Trial, full-time, to the Bodatac County Transport Program. Jared brings over 28 years of experience in public service, including a long career as a firefighter EMT with Roanoke County Fire and EMS, and serviced with departments in Denver and Hawaii. He holds a Class A CDL with hazmat endorsement, current DLT Physical and Extensive Emergency Response Training. Jared is also bilingual in English and Spanish, and is well-known for his strong customer service and leadership skills. His dedication, professional background, and safety-first mindset makes him an excellent addition to our team. We would also like to highlight Penny Firestone, as she reached 13 years of service coordinating the Senior Transport Program. She is directly responsible for training our new staff and scheduling of transportation services. Better than coming from me, I'd like to give her a chance to speak as to the importance of the program and why she loves being a part of it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Well, as she said, I've been here 13 years, and I really love helping the seniors. I think they kind of get overlooked sometimes, and it's really important that they get to their appointments and give their families a break when they can't miss work or, you know, just don't have that opportunity. So we fill in that gap sometimes, especially when we're doing dialysis patients. We currently have three, getting ready to add probably a fourth dialysis person. And that's a big commitment for us and for their families, for the patient as well, to ride. But that, you know, that's something that we're glad that we're able to do. And by having more drivers and vehicles on the road with dialysis and other appointments, hopefully we'll be able to reach out to even more folks, you know, all over the county. So we're really looking forward to some new changes and some challenges that we're going through right now. But we will get there. I'm really glad these two folks have been with me a couple of weeks now, and it's really looking very positive. So I'm feeling really good about that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a tremendously valuable service that this county provides, and those folks are very well touched by your service.
Yes.
Thank you. Improved their life.
We love being able to help a little bit. It's, you know, the least we can do when we're all going to get older, and we are going to need a little extra help.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. Congratulations on this, Shante. Thank you for your leadership. You can clap. Next, Mr. Leroux is going to make a big introduction.
Absolutely. Got an opportunity here, Madam Chair. As you know, our Director of Communications, Ms. Tiffany Bradberry, she had moved on to another position and left a vacancy. And I'm pleased to introduce the person that we offered that to and accepted, and will actually be coming on full-time on October 1. And up until then, he's been working a little bit part-time. This is someone that probably everyone in here has invited into their living room for the past 28 years. So as I have shared with some of the other local leaders in the region, is that the weather in Bodatac is always going to be sunny. So with that, it is a distinct pleasure in being able to introduce Mr. Brent Watts. Brent is a native of Bodatac County and graduated James River High School. Brent's early introduction to civic engagement was in 1994, when he joined fellow students in producing a voter education video that helped pass the bond referendum that secured the property that we are on today. He went on to receive a degree in communications at Old Dominion University, and later specialized in broadcast meteorology at Mississippi State. Brent has served the region for 28 years at WDBJ 7 Television, where he became a trusted voice during some of the region's largest weather and news events. His work has earned him multiple Emmy Awards. Today Brent returns to his roots as Bodatac County's Director of Communications, bringing with him a legacy of public trust, deep local insight, and steadfast commitment to serving the communities that shaped him. And we are so happy that Brent is here. Yesterday, I was in the office, and I heard someone come in, and they were whistling. And I was like, "Wait a second, that doesn't happen in here." And actually, it was really great. And so Brent is really a joy to be around and a joy to, will end up being a joy for this community. And always has been, but it'll be more dedicated now.
I appreciate it. Thank you, first off, board, and also the community of Bodatac. Look forward to serving, being transparent, being, you know, any way that I could help communicate what's happening and answer questions. Feel free to reach out. So I look forward to jumping into what is already very clearly a busy Bodatac County. And I look forward to the many, many years to come in serving the public. So thank you very much for having me. Thank you. You as well.
We're thrilled, Brent.
Thank you.
Mr. Leroux, I think you also have some more good news.
Yes. One of the other things was the Government Finance Officers Association. That's a national organization, GFOA. They provide certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting on an annual basis. And every locality does not get recognized in this manner. However, Bodatac has been recognized many, many times. And matter of fact, this year is the 20th consecutive year of being recognized by this fine organization due to the achievements that were associated with our finance office. So Katie Davis is the one in charge today. She said that she would take her platitudes from her position up here. So
Well done, Katie.
Appreciate Katie and everything that she did.
Thank you, Katie.
And I can attest that these awards are not given away. These are earned. And Katie and her predecessor, Tony Zerilla, both worked exceptionally hard and through difficult times to be able to actually achieve these goals. And we certainly do appreciate the work that they do and their staff that's involved. So with that, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Again, Ms. Davis, thank you for your leadership and this vital component of our county government. I do want to announce one walk-on agenda item. Mr. Leroux, are you going to give us some information on this?
Yes, ma'am, I certainly can. What this is associated with was a sheriff's request to purchase a small piece of property near the jail. And the tax map number is 73A (1) 96A. And the sheriff is interested in obtaining this property near the jail because they are rather landlocked. And he said that this kind of opportunity does not come up very often. And he was also, came forward with funding for this through his own funds, and Highway Safety Funds would actually be paying for this. The offer that he had made was $42,000 for this piece of property, and it was accepted. And so that was contingent upon the Board of Supervisors agreeing to that purchase. So if it be your wishes, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, that you would end up having a vote to declare if this is accepted or not.
Certainly, thank you. Do we have questions, first of all, about this item?
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept this agenda item, $42,000 paid for by the sheriff with his funds from the Highway Safety Fund. It is Parcel 73A (1) 96A.
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leroux. So we now will move on to Agenda Item Three, which is our citizen comment period that is specific to Agenda Items. Ms. Parker, if you could pass those to me. You can go ahead and turn yours in, and they'll put it in the right place. Do I have more, Julie? Okay, so I want to make sure that we handle these correctly. And you have the ones for the public hearing. Okay, so as you know, I have Agenda Items that are not related to Orchard Lake Dam. I'm going to call those first. Then we have a number of people who want to speak on Orchard Lake. With respect to Orchard Lake today, we have two items. We have the acceptance of the grant, which is Agenda Item Nine. I will hear those comments now. And then everybody that wanted to speak to Agenda Item Ten, which is the public hearing for the potential tax district, that's a public hearing. I'm going to save those comments for the public hearing. This is nine. You have 10. Is that okay? If anybody cannot wait for the public hearing, if you have to leave for any reason, tell me. And I will let you speak now. But I want to make sure we keep our two Agenda Items separate. Okay, so. No, no, no. The public hearing is scheduled to start at 2:45. But if you need to leave before, you can speak now. But I'd like to keep those as separate items if possible. So I'm going to call the non Orchard Lake folks down first. So Terry Broccoli, I think you have three Agenda Items you would like to address, 11, 16, and 19. I don't have for nine. Okay. So we'll do that after we do the non Orchard Lake items. So I'll call you back for that.
Is it on? Yeah, okay. My question to the board is, hi, my name is Terry Broccoli, and you know the rest. My concern is for number 19. I would like to know how much the settlement was that the Bodatac County is getting. And I would like to know what it's going to be used. I don't get an answer.
We're just listening to comments right now. We're not going to respond to everything, we can't. We can get you these answers, but we will not answer right now for all these people. We have three minutes for you to give your comments.
Okay, the other one that I have is number 16 on the battery energy storage system. I'm not sure. I had heard that that project got scrapped, but apparently it has not gotten scrapped. And we're still going with a toxic mess in the county. And I guess the other one, can I talk about the budget rollovers now, or I have to wait till that comes up?
Public hearing for that. If you'd like for your discussion to be closer to the time, we're going to hear all the comments. I can save for then.
Okay. That would be good. Thank you.
Rick Painter, Agenda 12. State your name, address, as you begin your comments.
Rick Painter, Blue Ridge District. My comments really are continuation. First time I spoke to this board and this leadership group, I use that term loosely. I pointed out that you were failing as leaders because leaders require having people follow. I have encouraged you for years now to seek training and and experience to fill in the leadership gap with no noticeable improvement whatsoever. I have contacted you, spoken here many times, contacted you by phone, by email, and met in person. Upon the advice of a friend of mine who is a highly respected local leader, and true leaders do seek advice from other leaders and take it. I'm taking his advice. I'm explaining some things to you very simply. First off, leadership is based on trust.
Are you going to speak to Agenda Item 12?
I am going to get to several of the items in one lump sum. Okay? Because what has happened is you have destroyed trust. The unilateral decisions, financial mismanagement, and not responding to your citizens who voted you and granted you that opportunity. That has caused a breakdown in trust of the people that elected you. If you want to lead them, you have to show trust. Now, one of the ways on the lake issue that I encourage you to do to show that trust is show that you have actually done your homework instead of doing your typical Democrat tax and spend. In other words, have you checked into alternatives to completely removing the lake, such as bringing the lake in volume compliance with state? The other thing is, have you considered alternatives in the way it would be removed if it's necessary for it to be removed? If you've done these things, then you should let us know. See, that builds trust. We know that you've done your homework. In all honesty, this board and our administrator has a poor reputation for doing their homework. So I would suggest very clearly that you postpone this decision until you do your homework and bring back to the public those who you work for the report of how you have attempted to put this extra taxation as the last-ditch effort if all else fails, instead of your first solution. Okay? Second area I would encourage you to trust is, I'm going to ask the board to stop abrogating their responsibility as supervisors over the administrator. Polity and policy should agree. Polity is the supervisor works for you. So the motion or idea of allowing Gary to write off $1 million without board supervision is an abrogation. So please, if you want us to trust you and follow you and support you, show us your worth.
Thank you. Next, Linda Rotman has two Agenda Items.
Hi, I'm Linda Rotman. I'm here first on number 14, which is the Resolution to Declare and Intend to Reimburse. So I would like to understand this better, and I'm sure the other citizens of this county would as well. The resolution calls for reimbursing the county for some expenses for the county courthouse and Reed Mountain projects, as if the county is some kind of separate entity that spent money on behalf of the county and needs to be reimbursed. There is no separation. The county is always just spending taxpayer money, and I think therefore must always be fully accountable to the taxpayers for every single dollar that it spends. The reimbursement, reimbursement, quote, explanation does not actually ring accurate or transparent. So I'm going to speculate about what this resolution might actually mean. Excuse me. One potential way to view the real meaning of the resolution is this. The county already borrowed money for the courthouse and Reed Mountain, has spent some of it, and wants to borrow $22 million more. So by way of example, if the county borrowed $40 million already for the courthouse, spent $22 million, and wants to borrow $22 million more, the total borrowing is $62 million versus $40 million. If that's what's happening, and I don't know what it is, it would increase the county's debt, which is a hot-button voter issue by a significant amount. I believe the current debt is in the neighborhood of $120 million. So this would be around an 18% increase. Let's call it 20% with closing costs for the borrowing. So if that's what's going on, I think that needs to be fully disclosed to the public. And if this is what's going on, I don't think it's sufficient to account to the public somewhere between 18 months and three years after the expenditure is made, as is called for in the resolution. Another potential way, since we don't have information about what this is actually for, is that the county took funds that were budgeted for another spending category, spent those on the courthouse or Reed Mountain, and needs to replace the funds. In that case, it would seem the county isn't following the budget, which is how this board told the citizens of this county that that's how the money would be spent. If that is so, that the county has, that this resolution is to replace monies that are in excess of what is budgeted, I think that needs to be disclosed to the citizens as well. Another potential way to view the resolution, and again, I don't know if this is the case, but is that these projects are costing more than was originally planned.
Do you want to go into your next three minutes with this?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so three more, Julie.
Thank you. So as I was saying, another potential way to view the resolution, and I don't know if this is the case because we don't have information about what the true purpose of this resolution is, is that these projects are costing more than originally planned, and the county has to borrow more to pay for them. Again, if this is the case, it should be fully disclosed so that the voters of this county can accurately assess the competence of the people who are managing their taxpayer dollars. So whether this proposal really means that the board is authorizing more debt or is spending more than was budgeted, or the projects are encountering cost overruns, or something else that I haven't imagined, before you act on this resolution, I think you need to fully explain it to the public, demonstrate if there are any benefits to the taxpayer, and let the voters and residents of this county weigh in before you make a decision. I don't think the putting a resolution in an agenda that is not published to the county more than a few days before a hearing is an adequate explanation for how you are going to spend taxpayer dollars. But if you are going to vote on this, I think you should put off, explain it to the taxpayers, give them an opportunity to give them an opportunity to weigh in on a notice hearing. But if you're going to vote on this today, at the very least, you should explain to the public whether the board is authorizing significantly more debt, spending more than was budgeted, encountering significant cost overruns, or something else, and how your vote is affecting the taxpayers. That's it on that, number 14.
So how much time left on 17? One minute.
Okay. So this one, I'll be quick. This is about the fees. This is about the fees for the planning commission fees, for surveys, et cetera. So in the proposal, it indicates that the fees are calculated to reimburse for a portion of the actual costs. I think that the fees should be sufficiently high to reimburse the county for 100% of the cost to performing these services. My second point is that the fees for developers, there's a concern that our development fees are not going to be competitive with other counties. I think our development fee should be high enough to discourage rampant development in this county. I think it's been made public that the heads and beds policy has been discontinued, and I think we now need to go with the will of the voters, which is to halt the indiscriminate development in this county. Thank you.
Now, we're going to move into the Orchard Lake discussion regarding Agenda Item 9.
I'm not sure about this grant that you all are trying to get for this Orchard Lake. I kind of agree with a lot of the people that have already spoke. We don't know a whole lot about what you all are doing. One of the things that came up was how about just lowering the levels of the lake? Then we don't have to get any grant money, which is basically our tax dollars. The other thing is that I have huge concerns about is that this whole Orchard Lake thing came up really close when Google announced that they were coming. We in this county know that they need water. That is a huge thing for Google. They have to have water. So now they're going to tap into Carvin's Cove to get them started, but then us as the taxpayers are going to be on the hook to either build a higher dam at Carvin's Cove or try to get something done here for Orchard Lake to get more money. As far as I'm concerned, if Google wants to do business in Bodatack County, then Google needs to pay, not the taxpayers. And I hope you fully understand that.
I'm a resident of Bodatack County and in Orchard Lake, and I'm here to discuss, obviously, the dam. And I did combine both of the issues together. So I just wanted to say that I sent an email to Steve this, last night, and I wanted the board to give serious consideration to the pending decision just regarding the Department of Conservation and Recreation Grant and the creation of Orchard Lake Service District. As you know, both of these decisions have a grave impact on the surrounding communities being pursued prematurely and without due process. In both cases, more data and analysis is needed. And I think before the board can make an informed decision, more information is definitely needed. And in, I won't go through all the questions I asked at the last meeting, but I did bring up the issues about the fact that there, you know, Lynda referred to budget items. There is no budget for this. There is no definite numbers for this. There's no, there's no research as far as what it would cost. So we're basing it on someone saying that it's going to be prohibitive to not breach the dam. However, we don't even have a number that goes along with prohibitive. So that needs to be considered, and it needs to be thought about. Also, in addition, in my September 10th meeting, in the September 10th meeting, I asked the DCR this question: If we have to breach the dam, what is your experience with lake beds, and what will it look like afterwards? The smell, the dead fish, the toxic fumes? And they stated that they did not know because they don't have experience with ever draining a lake. I think that is very frightening, that we are trusting information that is incomplete. And when we pose the question as people who live there, they could not answer. How could you not research what would be the aftermath? So we have a concern for, of course, for the safety of those that would be impacted in the flood zone. However, we've never been flooded, but we don't have a concern for the safety of all the citizens that live there once the lake is drained, which could be very toxic. The fumes, the smell that lasts over two years? He didn't have information. So until we can accurately explain to the citizens and the service district, people that are impacted, and the people on the lake, I think we should reconsider all of that. In addition, I also believe that if the ordinance is written, you know, so that Bodatack County has all sorts of control, it isn't just a tax district. Breaching of the dam is, and I quote from the ordinance itself, "County would administer the project, hire, oversee, pay engineers, fire regulatory reports," excuse me, "and they would do all aspects of the dam breach, not solely responsible for imposing increased taxes on everyone, but all of these other things that are involved in the project as well." Basically giving, giving Bodatack County complete control of a project that impacts the private citizens and the backyards of people's property. So I propose that if-
That's three minutes. We're going to stick to our time limit today.
Okay. I just have a proposal. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Dinah Moser.
Hi, my name is Greg Sutherland, resident of Bodatack County, Amsterdam District. I am here today to respectfully request that you vote no on the special tax district and on the proposal to accept the DCR grant. It is wrong to accept this grant at this time. It should be, DCR should be allowed to complete their evaluations and recommendations to repair dam or fill in the dam as been suggested. Then the county and other owners can make a fully informed decision about the future of the lake. To rush this decision is poor leadership. Now, I talked to this body about poor leadership before. Apparently, it has not improved. And I hope that you will take the advice of everybody in this room and really take a look at this before voting on it. It is very important. You will not only harm the people's values, but you will harm their quality of life if you breach this dam. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ann Sowers. After that, Anissa Sane, if you want to be prepared to come down.
Hello, my name is Ann Sowers, and I live in Amsterdam District. In fact, for the past 40 years, I've lived on Orchard Lake. It's one of the reasons my husband and I bought our home there. Although with my brain, I can understand the reasoning behind the owners of the dam to want to breach the dam and get rid of it, but in my heart, if that happens, I will always grieve the loss of Orchard Lake. At this time, you all are looking at accepting the grant from the DCR. My understanding is that this grant will only cover the cost after the breach is done of redirecting the stream that feeds the lake and of paying for dirt to cover the hundreds of bodies of wildlife that will be left there once the lake is gone. Part of that is just a matter of putting dirt over these bodies to decrease the stench that's going to result from this. According to what I know, that is all that this will pay for. We will be left with 13 acres of dirt to deal with. On September 10th, Mr. Mormon stated that any reconstruction that would be done in this area would be up to the homeowners. I expect that the cost to reconstruct these 13 acres will actually equal the amount of money that it will take to breach the dam. My question is, who's going to pay for it? He seems to think the homeowners can. There are 10 of us. Seven of us are over the age of 65. We can't afford this. There's also the issue of the tax district, and you'll hear more about these, but these people are not responsible for Orchard Lake, and I do not think it's conceivable for you all to tax them for it. The third option, the third option is to refuse this grant, go back to the DCR. They will give you a grant of up to $2 million for this type of project. This is what I would like for you all to see. Unfortunately, breaching the dam will have created a mess. I do not want the county to be able to walk away from this and expect others to pick up the pieces. You all will have created a mess and a problem, and I hope that you will do your best to take care of that problem.
Anissa Sane.
Yes, sir.
I have two minutes. If I have some better, I need to sit down with three appointments.
You can go after her, sure. What is your name?
Joel Plant.
Anissa Sane, Amsterdam. I'm here to urge you to vote against the special tax district for Orchard Lake and the .5 million DCR grant when you can get up to 2 million. We are like a miniature Smith Mountain Lake. Imagine if Smith Mountain Lakefront residents were told their lake was going to be drained, and then the surrounding homes and they were going to pay for it with extra taxes. Ludicrous. You've each been provided with our notarized petition opposed to the tax district. 84% of the parcel owners signed that petition. I sent it to each board member by email and by regular mail. You have received that petition over two weeks ago. I hope it's been read. The back of it has a letter from Terri Austin supporting us stating, surely you will recompense these owners when you drain the dam for their property damage. The county doesn't even have a formal estimate to take down or repair the dam. Both of these estimates should be made and available to the public to make a good decision. It's actually possible that repair could be cheaper than teardown, plus the cost of the lawsuits that will ensue from the homeowners, who are going to suffer property damage, lowering of property values, loss of lake use. We enjoy kayaking, canoeing, fishing, paddle boating, and some sailboating, our view shed, our enjoyment of wildlife. We bought there for a reason. Bodatack County hasn't done their homework. They didn't even know until two weeks ago that an eight-inch steel gas pipe that Roanoke Gas owns, that was the initial pipe put in in the 1940s to serve the Roanoke Valley, was even next to the dam. The gas company checks their pipe every six months. In a phone conversation with them, they said, "The dam looks great to us. Just cut off a few trees." We know that the DCR has it a lot more complicated than that. Has the county approached Google regarding either the dam in Greenfield or our dam? They want 8 millions of water, gallons of water a day for their data center. Maybe they would be willing to repair the dam and channel the water on the other side for their liking. Has the county talked with the Virginia Western Water Authority about the dam? Or have they talked to Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources? I would guess no on all three accounts. Regarding the half a million DCR grant, an inundation study for Orchard Lake Dam to formally classify it as high hazard would make the county eligible for $2 million. If you-
Thank you. Thank you. Gentlemen, you may come on up. While he's walking up, Mr. Lockaby, it's 2:48. We have our public hearing scheduled for 2:45. Can I just finish these comments and then move right into that?
It, yes, it doesn't, it's, the times are at that time or soon.
A quarter later. Okay. I think we'll hear these and then move right into that, if that's- Can you give us your name and-
My name is Joel Plant. I'm in Valley District. My wife and I moved here in 2018. We came here because of the beauty and peacefulness of the area. As a side note, I was stationed a couple times in Virginia. I fell in love with Virginia. We are both 100% disabled veterans. As such, the taxes you imposed on the residents do not affect my wife and I entirely. They do, however, affect my friends, my neighborhood, and the entire county. The changes you have made to this county are disgraceful. You have allowed enterprises to buy up land and build what they want, with your approval, of course, not what the people of Bodatack County want. We voted for you because we believed in you. You have imposed higher taxes on everyone in the county, yet give tax breaks to the businesses you've allowed in. You have destroyed the beauty of Bodatack that Bodatack once had. It seems you are also trying to erase its history. Those of you that vote in favor of these changes should be ashamed that you took favor over your constituents. Over five years ago, I contacted a well-known business telling them that there was prime land here at I-81 and Exit 150 to open their business. I also sent an email to each of you suggesting you contact this enterprise. That suggestion fell on deaf ears. The business would have generated more tax revenue and jobs than your gas stations, restaurants, and apartments combined. That business was Bass Pro Shops. I was told you were not interested. If I could ask one thing from all of you, it would be to stop any future changes that you had planned, reconsider your thought processes, and remember the people who trusted you and voted for you. Hopefully, your constituents will do their homework before voting next time and not just check incumbent on the ballot.
Darrell Fraz. Julie Fraz will be next.
I'm Darrell Fraz, 327 Ridgecrest Drive in Delville. Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We urge the board to accept this half million dollar grant and put it to the use that it was made for, taking the dam down. The age of the dam, the presence of a dam leak, and the high-pressure gas main that runs through it make this dam a high hazard, as well as the people that live downstream. The dam's a high hazard not because of neglect, the overflow pipe is too small, the spillway is too small, there are no drain ports and no plunge pool, all that are required in today's dam. They were not required 70 years ago. The heavy rains that have become normal across the U.S. will eventually hit this dam area. We are not willing to wait and see. We hope the county sees it the same way and not risk people's lives, property, infrastructure, and our family from dam failure that could break that gas main and cause an explosion. Take the dam down should be a requirement, not an option. Reminder here, there are two dams 200 yards apart from each other draining to the same stream. How many signs will it take to see the real danger here? With just a few inches of rain, the main drain pipe is overwhelmed, the overflow, the overwhelming, the spillway, not only does the spillway overflow, the gas easement has now turned into the spillway. When it rains hard, that spillway is full, and that easement is running torrent- When it rains hard, that spillway is full, and that easement is running torrentially down that easement into the creek. If that's not a danger, I don't know what is. And there's a leak in that dam that traverses from the lake, across that easement, under or over that high-pressure gas main where it's bubbling up out of the ground. Someone built the dam on top of the gas main easement. And now with heavy rain, the easement and the spillway are one and the same. I'm kind of repeating myself here. The dam leak is considered a stage one, meaning it is clear water running through it. We are supposed to monitor it and note the water changes from clear to cloudy. When it's under pressure from a storm, how will we know that it's changed from stage one, or stage two, or stage three? How can we monitor it when the location is under torrential water flow that lasts two or three days or more? What's the timeline from stage one, two, or three, today, tomorrow, next week, next month, next year? If we keep on this timeframe, most likely, it's going to be too late when something Raise your hand if you're willing to risk that. Anybody want to risk that? Anybody want to take this on and risk that? Anybody here, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Again, we urge you to accept the grant and proceed with the takedown of the dam. Special thanks to Mr. Mormon and all his hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraz. Ms. Fraz, go ahead, three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Julie Fraz. I'm in the Amsterdam District. Today, good afternoon to the Board of Supervisors, county officials, and our fellow Bodatack citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Today, I'm asking you to vote to approve the $500,000 grant so that we can begin work to take down the Orchard Lake Dam and repair the land beneath the water. Many of you here today or listening have received the Cliff Notes version of dam safety. We've owned this dam, along with Bodatack County, for 23 years. During this time, we have evolved from an agricultural pond to a state-regulated dam that has the potential to impound 105 acre-feet of water. That's one foot of water for 105 acres. Foot of water for 105 acres. Over these 23 years, we have seen more and more water coming into the lake and spilling out, and this is because there has been significant local business subdivisions built and land has been paved, increasing the runoff into the lake. At the same time, the weather events have produced high winds and much water over the eastern part of the United States, and they've been increasing in frequency and magnitude. It's apparent that the Orchard Lake Dam cannot handle the flow of incoming water. We have no gates or valves to open. When Helene hit, the DCR sent us a message to decrease the water level by six inches. Okay, we don't, we can't do that. We're lucky it didn't come up our way. Dams were designed differently 70 years ago. The overflow pipe in the middle of the lake overtops almost every time we get a couple inches of rain, and the overflow pipe is about eight inches. Okay, it's in the middle of the lake. It's designed to be the main drain. And when the overflow pipe is overtopped, the spillway kicks in, and the spillway is also unable to handle this water because it is undersized. The water flow is torrential, and water begins to flow down an unintended path to the creek. And through, and though the gas line, I'm sorry, through the gas line easement, so much erosion has taken place because of the way this water flows, the high-pressure natural gas line runs through the dam. We're not afraid the dam will fall over today, but we are afraid that a weather event could hit, and this dam will fail because of its unable to handle the water flow. As we've learned from the DCR engineer two weeks ago, a dam failure would send five feet of water within 12 minutes to Catawba Road with 4,400 cars and buses traveling per day. The Cherry Blossom Trail and Running Trail would be buried. The shifting dirt could break and ignite the glass line, gas line, and actually blow us up. So I'm, I just see my time is closing here, but we are urging you to take the grant, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'd like to say this. This has been going on for three years, not five weeks. Three years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. James Cooper. And after this comment, these are all the comments I have on item nine. We will consider that item and then move into item number 10, which is the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. I'm Jim, James Cooper from Amsterdam District. And in regard to the grant, I don't know this, but if the grant is strictly for demolishing the entire dam, I am opposed to that. If the grant can be used to remediate the dam, or to even lower the dam, to make future improvements to the dam, I'm certainly open to that discussion, but I think those things should be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That concludes our public comments. Thank you all for adhering to the time. I hate to cut anyone off, but we do obviously want to hear from everybody today and do this in an orderly fashion. So we are going to now move to that agenda item. So let us go to item number nine on your agendas. I'm sorry, no, nine. We're going to do number nine first, the grant. So Mr. LaRue, if you would come forward and present agenda item nine, the board will then discuss that and take any action that is appropriate.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. This is in your packet, uh, excuse me, I just lost it. This is in your packet, and I'll just go through the administrator's comments. As previously authorized by the Board of Supervisor, staff applied for our Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation DCR grant to breach the Orchard Lake Dam and drain the lake due to the dam not meeting dam safety regulations and the cost of compliance being prohibitive. DCR awarded a 50% grant based on an estimated budget for the work of 1 million. The board endorsed the county funding for the work. Such funding to be repaid by the DCR grant and by Orchard Lake property owners over a time period to be determined. And, Madam Chair, I would indicate that that is not a given, that it would end up happening that way, but that it is a possibility. I think you'll be listening to public comments about paying that back in the future. The grant must be formally accepted by executing an agreement with the Virginia Resource Authority, VRA, by October the 17th of 2025. That's the reason why this, this item, number nine, is so important today because there would not be another board meeting between now and when this must be accepted. If accepted, the work must be completed within two years and must meet all grant conditions. Upon completion of the work and satisfaction of all conditions, VRA will provide its $500,000 in grant funds to the county. Now, the county would end up having to front those dollars upfront and then would actually ask for reimbursement. If the work costs less than 1 million, DCR will fund 50% of the actual cost. If the cost of the work exceeds 1 million, staff will pursue additional grant funds from DCR to equal 50% of the additional cost, with the other 50% being financed by the county and paid over time. Acceptance of the grant does not obligate either the county or the dam's private co-owners to perform the work for which the grant was awarded. If accepted, the grant may subsequently be declined. Grants are awarded on a competitive basis based on the availability of funds annually. If not accepted by October the 17th, 2025, the next opportunity to apply for a grant would be early 2026, with an award notice expected in the summer of '26. So the recommendation, understanding that you would end up having this $500,000 available, is to actually accept that grant, the award of $500,000 for the Orchard Lake, and authorize staff to execute and submit all necessary documents to VRA by October 17th of 2025, upon the review and approval of the county attorney. Now, it's, it's been talked about, well, maybe we could end up getting additional funds as much as $2 million, and that is understandable. However, it's based upon the cost of actually doing the work, and the grant will not pay for more than 50% of that cost. And so if there is additional dollar salt, then those would be additional dollars that would be on the backs of the citizens of Bodatack County. So it's, the DCR grant will not pay for everything. It will only pay for up to 50% the way that I understand it from the situation. Any questions? Any concerns?
Questions from the board?
Here, I just want to make, I want to, if I may, if I may.
Sure.
Want to make sure that this is not directed just to breach the lake. It could be used for other things as well.
So.
If we wanted to save the lake.
If, as, as I read, if the grant was to breach the Orchard Lake Dam, however, I have not had direct conversations with DCR about what else that might end up doing, and I don't know if there could very well be other opportunities or not.
Now, if we do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we do accept that, we can deny it. If we, if that's what their intention was, we could deny that.
There is no, no fault, no, no problem with later saying, "No, we choose not to accept the grant into the future." Of course, if you start spending money according to the grant, then you basically have accepted the grant and are moving forward with it.
Comments? Questions? So I, I just want to reiterate that if we accept this grant, it does not obligate us.
Correct.
To any action.
Correct.
It is there for up to two years.
And you can also ask for.
An extension.
A one-year extension.
After that, so, in, in all likelihood, up to three years to complete a project, but we can get to the end of three years and never touch a dime of it, and never obligate any of our money to it.
That's what I would interpret from the reading that I've had. Now, I would, I would provide a caveat, is that Mr. Mormon could not be here today due to medical situation, but I know that he has been very much involved in this, and I'm not superseding what he has done because he has, he has spent a lot of time, energy, and effort on this project, and he has been a lead associated with that. And if he were here, he might be able to actually answer the questions more informatively than what I can, but just because I've been working on other projects.
No, 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 let's not get into, let's, let's pause for a moment. No one's trying to silence you. I want to do this in an orderly fashion. We're trying to answer these questions in an orderly fashion. We're going to have a public hearing in just a minute to have more conversation, but right now, we're considering this grant. So, Mr. LaRue, are you comfortable answering these questions, or would you like further?
I will certainly try to answer the questions the best of my ability. No, no issue there.
So, again, I think the question is, does this obligate us?
No.
To using this money?
I have never heard that this has obligated anyone. Matter of fact, on the September the 10th meeting, when DCR was here in this room, they, they said that there was no fault to not accepting the grant or to accept the grant, and so that's what I would end up stating.
So, Mr. Fraz, I am going to call on you. But do you, what, what would your comment be regarding if we accept the grant, what obligation does that give us toward any action? Does that obligate us to removing the dam?
Correct.
When, when you spend and begin action, that obligates you. Ms. Sane, I think you also raised your hand. Do you? But does it obligate us to take it down, is what we're asking? If we accept this potential money, are we obligated to take it down? That is what, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Madam Chair.
Uh, one, wait, we're, I'm going to call on people one at a time. We're going to have some order. We're not going to scream at each other.
Madam Chair, Mr. Lockaby may have a better answer to that.
Madam Chair, this grant can only be used to take down the dam. However, if you refuse the grant, then the chances are significantly lessened for our getting a future grant.
Right.
To take down the dam. My understanding is that there are other options that we could look at into the future for potential remediation of the dam or lowering of the dam and applying for a grant in the next cycle beginning December 31. However, if we say no to this, then it may be that the option of breaching the dam is foreclosed to us, and that's the reason why we might wish to say yes to this grant tentatively, with the understanding that there's at least a decent chance that we back out and follow another course of action at a later date.
To accept, I'm going to ask you the same question then. If we accept it, it doesn't obligate us to take down the dam?
It does not.
No.
It does not. Unless we spend, unless we begin an action, and an action would have to be board-approved.
And by action, it means that we make a draw on it. We could start spending money.
We can.
Toward that and stop, but as long as we have.
But when we ask them.
Ever ask for reimbursement.
Then we get ourselves committed.
Okay. Once you ask for reimbursement.
Sure. If we're going to have more comment, we'll go to the microphones. I saw one other hand. Yes, sir. You've spoken once, but let's, let's hear you out. Mr. Lockaby specifically said, and he's our county attorney, he should know this, that this will not obligate us to action.
I have read the contracts.
He says he read the contracts, and that is his interpretation of them. Excuse me, excuse me. On it, because the reason we are voting on it today is if we don't notify them by October 17th, we miss this entire cycle, so we wait another year. The rush is that we have a situation that must be addressed, that needs to be addressed, that needs to, we need to, to get some resolution on this, and, and we're not finished with this discussion yet, but the reason we are voting today is because there is a deadline that then cycles to a whole other year, which we may or may not be accepted into, and there may or may not be funding for.
Right. Madam Chair.
No more, all right, we're, we're going to quit. We're, I think we've heard, I think we've heard the prevailing opinions. More discussion from the board, please.
Madam Chair, if I can ask our county attorney something here. The, if we, if, if we accept this, can we still look for another grant that will give us an opportunity to rebuild this or to, you know, decrease the height of this?
That's my, DCR is not going to lock us out. That's my, DCR is not going to lock us out of the 2026 cycle if we accept this. If we don't accept this, like I said, it looks, I don't believe, none of the program guidelines indicate that we are locked out of doing a few, breaching it as a future option. However, it makes it more difficult to get future grants. We'll score lower because we're not credible if we try to say that we refused once and then we changed our mind. However, we're not locked in and we can still go after a different solution on the 2026 cycle if we choose to do so, which is to say, if between now and the end of the year, we determine that dropping the height of the dam three feet and doing some, uh, doing some other work around the area is going to be sufficient. And frankly, it wouldn't just be lowering the height of the dam by two or three feet. There's quite a few things that would need to happen. But if you were willing to do that instead, we could pursue a grant for that going into the 2026 funding cycle.
Comments?
Madam Chair, I think that by accepting the grant today and then looking for those alternatives, you're extending the full flexibility that's associated.
And it's not going to commit us down one path of action? Ask for recess.
No, I mean, just in public.
Can we intercede session?
No. What I'm, I guess if we can talk amongst ourselves here. I just, I don't feel comfortable accepting a grant unless I can sit there and have another grant available for us to lower the, lower the height and maybe do some other. Some other possible remediation to help that.
And that is, that is possible under this circumstance, correct?
That we could, and I want to make sure I'm getting this right, that if we accept that, that's fine. But if we also have the opportunity to look for another grant.
To get more.
For.
Yes.
Remediating, or not remediation, but not breaching, but to help lower the dam and have some sort of spillway that would be helped.
So accepting this grant, and Mr. Lockaby, we're, we're going to lean on you here. Think what we're saying is we would, if we, we don't want to accept this grant if it will exclude us from getting any other grant funding for any other solution. We want to be able to pursue those.
Understood. And.
And I think there's other solutions that can happen. I really do.
And if I understand, you're also directing Mr. Leroux to make sure that we move forward between now and the end of the year with finding, with doing those studies and those solutions. I think, and, and I think there's been a, a misunderstanding. DCR doesn't do these studies. We do these studies. It is a cost out of the county's pocket to do all of these inundation studies and engineering reports in order to know about all of these. So, uh, but at the same time, it might be important to do all of that.
I think there's, I, I believe there's other alternatives that are out there that we can look for.
So I think we have two actions here. Two things under this agenda item. I think we can make a decision on the acceptance or not acceptance of this grant. And then we could have a second motion. I could entertain a second motion that directs staff to investigate and come back to us with, uh, other options, other solutions. Is that what we're saying?
Right. Or other grants that may be.
And, and other grants, other funding opportunities and other solutions. I thank you all for being civil in this discussion. I know this is a very, very close to home issue. And I'm trying to keep us orderly and also hear everybody and make sure that we have the facts that, that we're looking for. So I'm going to let three more people speak that have had their hands up. Yes, sir. And if you could go to a microphone. Could you go to a microphone, please? Just so we can make sure we capture your comments. It's fine. You, you, you're going to come up in your next form.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. When we accept the grant for $500,000, that's usually stipulated that the taxpayer matched that 500,000. So that has to come in the form of a tax. And if you're going to put a surtax on us, I'm against that.
The tax, the public hearing on the taxing in the tax district is going to be after this item. So we're going to.
You can't, you have to tie it to both because the grant is predicated upon the tax to the taxpayer.
There's two different actions to be taken.
They're not independent, ma'am. I hate to, I hate to tell you that.
They still have to be two separate actions. We can't.
Look, this whole thing has been a mistake. You've made a terrible mistake here. You've obligated the taxpayers of Bonnetot County for the liability of this dam. The dam is a problem. It's been there 100 years and it is now a problem. The next 100 years, we need to solve it in the next month or so. We have to come up with a solution.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but your, your suggestion of either accepting this grant or not is, is a false piece of information to all these wonderful people. Please, you have to consider both of them.
Dr. Scott, would you like to speak?
So I think that he has a point here. Maybe we should go to. And I'm going to ask for, leave here. If that is true, is that, is that true? That, you know, if that grant, it sounds, I mean, it makes sense that if we accept that grant, we're also accepting the fact that we're going to tax our citizens on that.
If we start spending down that grant, I don't know that we'll tax our citizens on it, but there is a 50% match on that grant.
Okay.
So if we actually start doing that work to take down the dam, then we do obligate ourselves to spend that money. But I think that it's also important to recognize we own a problem that's now 70 years old.
Or it's our problem.
And so we own that problem whether we get a DCR grant or not.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm going to ask a favor here. And this is kind of strange, but can we move to item 10? And then come back to nine?
Yeah, we don't have to act now. Um, we can, we can go ahead and have the public hearing. We'll get the presentation and have our comments that we're going to make on that and then come back to item nine. So at the request of Supervisor Scott Horn, we are going to move into item 10, which is going to include a public hearing with a whole lot more public comments. We have some things to say, uh, at first, but, uh, Mr. Lockaby is going to present this agenda item regarding a special tax district. And that, I want to say this is different than a, this is a tax district that would apply to a certain population. This is not a tax for the entire county. I think what the gentleman before was saying is that the tax dollars from the entire county are going to have to be used for any match that we agree to. This item is for a special tax district. So if you would present that, Mr. Lockaby, then I think we have some comments and then I'll open the public hearing.
Uh, yes, ma'am. If that's your pleasure. Madam Chair, at the risk of, of telling a personal story, one of my mentors, a fellow named Webster Day, he's now pretty much entirely retired. But over the last three to five years, as he and I have been working on the last few deals of his career, and he's been teaching me the last few bits that he had to teach me. On occasion, I would say to Webster, I would say, you know, if we set up this deal this particular way, we're going to have a problem five years down the road. And what Webster would say to me is he would grin and he would say, no, Mike, you're going to have a problem five years down the road. And that's what happened here. The Orchard Lake subdivision was platted between 1971 and 1984 in four phases. And by fellows named R.W. Woodson and L.S. Mitchell. And when they platted it, there was at that time, an old agricultural pond, which they, at that point, it wasn't old. It was probably only 20, 30 years old at most. And when they, but they made it a, a central amenity of their subdivision, named it the Orchard Lake subdivision. If I could go back in time 50 years and shake the lapels of Mr. Woodson and Mr. Mitchell and tell them, can you please just form a homeowners association to take care of this? Then I would certainly do so. But here we are, we're 50 years later and we don't really have, we're, we're stuck with a problem that a whole bunch of people, that somebody created 50 years ago and a whole bunch of people have walked past before we got here. And now we're in a position where DCR is telling us that we need to start sinking serious money into things like inundation studies, engineering reports. Um, and when I say serious money, we're probably not talking six figures, but we're talking well into the five figures. And if we don't do that, we wind up with a notice of violation. And we in the phrases are what's called jointly and severally liable for that, which means that we can each be gone after for the entire cost. And I know that you can do the math on whose pocket is much deeper if DCR is going to go after somebody. So we have a problem. We own about a quarter of the dam. The phrases own about three quarters of the dam. We know that the dam has problems. We know that at the bare minimum, it needs remediation. It's unsafe as it is because, and it needs remediation regardless of what we do. We also know for reasonably certain that, um, its high hazard status is not based upon its upkeep. You could have a perfectly beautiful built six months ago dam, built to the most wonderful standards, and it would be a high hazard dam because of what's downstream, which includes part of the Rivermead subdivision. It includes several other pieces of property. It goes up onto, um, the school board property. It goes down across Catawba Road and would bring a wave right across Catawba Road if it didn't try, take out, we used to call it the Kevin Ham Bridge. Remember that? Um, if it didn't take out the Kevin Ham Bridge on the way through. So that was the genesis of wanting to figure out what was going to happen. And I think it's important to note that there is agency here, both on our part and on the phrases' part. They're part owners. Um, we're also part owners. Neither of us has the ability to force the other to do something. So we all have to be, in a sense, at least we in the phrases have to be on the same page with regard to what's going to happen next with the dam. All of that said, we've just, we, we've had the discussion about the possible, that the phrases applied for a grant, which we voted to support their application to breach the dam and to drain out the lake. And that grant pays 50% of that cost, up to $500,000. Regardless of what we do with the lake, whether it's ultimately breached, whether the dam is ultimately breached, or the dam is remediated, or the dam is completely rebuilt, whatever it is that we ultimately decide to do, there is going to be a substantial sum of money out of the pocket of the county in order to provide the match for that $500,000. Again, just real talk, I have no idea what the phrases' bank account looks like. Perhaps they're lottery winners and no one knows it. But in all likelihood, again, we're, the county is going to wind up being the deep pockets that have to come up with much of that. We own the problem, literally. So it's very difficult from the standpoint of 2025 to tell somebody in Buchanan who's never heard of Orchard Lake that there's going to be money out of their pocket to make up the county's portion of this. It's very difficult to tell people in British Woods who are part of an HOA that maintains the dam in their subdivision, oh, we're going to take money out of your pocket in order to pay for that match. Consequently, the concept that we came up with is what's called a service district. And a service district has the ability to charge fees or taxes to a particular defined area of a locality in order to raise funds to provide some service for that area of the locality. And the boundaries of that district merely have to be rationally related to the purpose of the district. Initially, the concept of the area of that district was the Orchard Lake subdivision, which is to say the area that Mr. Woodson and Mr. Mitchell would have probably made part of the homeowners association 50 years ago if they had been forward thinking. They weren't. Now, that's not to say that you need to have the boundaries. And in fact, uh, my recommendation, and I think it matches Mr. Mormon's recommendation uh, on the part of administrative staff, is that you not make any decision on the idea of a service district today. This is a decision that can be punted down the road quite a ways before any decision ultimately needs to be made. You might change the boundaries of that district. You might decide that you're going to take properties that don't actually abut the lake out of the district. And you're going to take properties downstream that will benefit from being taken out of an inundation zone and put them into the district. You can make all of those decisions and that's part of what you're here for. That's why the people, as we've heard today, that's why the people voted you into office as people who they trusted to have the integrity, fairness, and frankly, to invest the time in understanding complicated issues. So I would recommend to you that you treat today as legitimately a listening session on exactly what that area should be. Because regardless of what in the world we do with this dam, something is going to have to be done with it. And it's in the manner of probably months until we need to move forward with things like inundation studies and engineering reports. And it's probably a single digit number of years, probably a number you can count on one hand before we're facing an NOV from DCR and we really need to take care of it. Right now, we have the benefit of being able to take our time. But we ate up 50 years of time before, while we weren't even hardly paying attention to it. Now, I, I also want to note, the land under the lake is actually owned by the abutting landowners. It is not owned by the county. It is not owned by the HOA. Uh, technically, the people who own the land under the lake could fence off their area of the lake. There's actually a lake, a case where somebody did that somewhere and their neighbors sued them and said they had to take the fence down and they didn't have to. So, uh, people find up, think of crazy things to sue about. But, um, hopefully we can work to deal with this issue that a generation that's now either passed or at the glebe, uh, left to us.
So it's not our fault, but it is our problem.
That would be a good way to put it, ma'am.
Madam Chair, if I may, ask one question here because made mention about the service district. We kind of have to make a decision. If we're going to accept the grant and it's based upon the taxation, of possible taxation.
Sure, they are tied together. Before you start spending hard money in pursuance of that grant.
Come from.
That's, that's what the, that's what the.
Decision needs to be made.
It's a, uh, it's a timing thing because we need, if we're going to accept the grant, we need to do so before October 17th.
I understand.
But we don't actually need to commit to spend that money for months into the future.
For three years.
But if we accept the grant, we've also accepted the fact that we have a service district.
Or you could still have an HOA that, that met the.
I want to know.
That met the branch. HOA is certainly the best solution here. If the people can stand up and take care of this themselves, that, that is the ideal solution from the standpoint of the county.
How do we insert that into the conversation, HOA?
I, I know that it has been talked about several times again. And I was not in the room when those conversations were had. I know that, again, Mr. Mormon was in the room for some of them, but that's been raised before. And it would certainly be preferable for the people in the subdivision to get together and have that agency rather than having the, in a way, the heavy hand of government. rather than having the, in a way, the heavy hand of government say, look, we're all going to have a problem here because DCR is going to bring themselves down on it if we don't do something.
So any comments, Supervisor Michael Nicely? Let me ask this question that has also been brought forward. You indicated for the lake, the bottom of the lake, the landowners own that. Is there any plans for development of this property following a breach?
The only
Has been brought forward multiple times that that there is a plan to develop this, and that's why we want to breach the dam.
No, ma'am. Part of the purpose, under the way the ordinance is drafted, part of the purpose of the service district would be to remediate the bottom of the lake, to deal with the not just going to breach the dam and leave it a mud puddle. The idea would be to do grading and remediation there and potentially deal with some of the stormwater detention issue purposes, detention purposes that this lake has historically served. Again, it's a more complicated issue that we will have to sink. Regardless of whether we breach the dam or not, engineering money will get sunk into this to carry it forward.
Situation.
Yes, ma'am.
To me, the most important thing is seeking and arriving at the best solution and best technical solution, if you will. And we're not there yet. And I think we do have the time with DCR. We have time with the stability of the dam and so on to take the time to do severe due diligence to make sure that we've covered every every option, meaning, in my opinion, contracting with professionals and know something about earth and dams. And take that time. And I could put aside for now the dollars. Yeah, they're going to hurt. There's going to be dollars. But man, to me, the biggest issue is how do we fix it? And when do we fix it?
The safest route has to be considered as well. We haven't talked much about safety today, but we need to get that on the table as well. I agree. We don't have any of the information really that we need. We can definitely look for other solutions, for other funding sources. And at some point, I'm going to ask for a motion to ask staff to begin that process. Have a public hearing slated.
Okay.
Go ahead.
One of the things, one of the questions or comments were brought up about the gas line. When was the gas line put in? Nineteen fifty. So it was before the dam was even there. Okay. What about, I mean, also, we have to think about what happens if one of these houses catches on fire because this is a dry well area? And so what about that safety?
We brought that up last time and asked about chiefers and given us some information on that. So again, I think we don't have all the information that we need to to come up with a complete solution. So I'd like to see lots of options, honestly. So we have a public hearing scheduled regarding specifically the formation of tax district. I think it's the suggestion of council, if I understand you correctly, is to proceed with that hearing, but take no action today?
Correct. With the explicit understanding that the board is not going to take action to create a service district today, or even to declare the boundaries of them. But it does want some input on what would be a fair way of figuring out how you're going to pay for what's a neighborhood problem, which ideally you would have an HOA. That would be what if you could go back fifty years and do that, that would be wonderful. If people today will step forward and do that, that would be wonderful. But sooner or later, somebody's going to have to pay for the pay for at least some of the cost of taking care of this.
And, you know, I think in forming that HOA also, we also need to know what the price is on a HOA per person. So that would all all these things that are out there that
Absolutely.
Not turned over yet.
And and one final point I wanted to mention with regard to the counties putting in a lot of the administrative equity in terms of doing the procurement and the project management and so forth on this, which is in the ordinance. And I know that that was a comment that was raised. It's not a it was not put in there originally as a matter of the county having control over that. It was a matter of the county owns part of this dam, but the county is exempt from taxes. If the county goes and puts in several hundred thousand dollars of its employees' time and contracts with contract and contracts with engineers to do some oversight on its nickel, and then finances the cost over at zero percent over a number of years. For instance, a half million dollars at currently going rates for fifteen years, we would be foregoing $300,000 in interest by financing it at zero percent instead of just putting it into a savings account. So there are things that the county would be putting into that. That was the concept there, was it for the county to be putting in that sweat equity, which probably by the end of the day winds up being a half million or more toward making that happen. Thank you.
Do we want to break before the hearing? Yes. So I'm going to ask, is there a motion that we proceed with the hearing with the understanding we're going to take no action on a tax district today?
Say that again.
I think it was the suggestion of council. So I'm asking in the form of a motion that we proceed with the public hearing so that we can get everyone's input that's here today that wants to speak to this issue of the tax district, but realizing we are not going to take action on a tax district today.
I would make such a motion.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have discussion? Supervisor Michael?
Yes, either one.
I saw your lips move first, so I'm calling Walt. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm still coming back to the fact of if we accept that grant, then we're also accepting.
But if we don't use it.
If we don't, yeah.
He was asking about how that would impact if we accepted the grant, because we have to get back to item nine. Don't forget. If we accept the grant, how I think we could come back and do a tax district later. We're not excluding it. We're not accepting it. We're simply listening to public comment on it.
Okay.
Is, I think, the intent of this motion.
Yes.
Are we clear on that? So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? So we will have a public hearing. We are not going to act on a tax district today. But we do want to hear the body of opinion regarding this issue. I think we are all now well aware, this is going to cost somehow, somehow, some way. Let's be very intentional about how we handle this solution. So in essence, what I think we're doing, putting a little bit of brakes on here. Let's get more details. Let's look at other options before we make a before we chart a concrete path forward. So that being said, I'm going to ask for a ten minute break before we begin. All public comments, we want to hear from everybody. So let's refresh ourselves a little bit. Take a bio break if you need to. We will resume at three fifty. Three fifty.
We're not going to get through this.
Thank you.
Please, thank you so much. Everybody wants to get comfortable? I just want to open this public hearing again. Let's remember to be civil. Let's remember to be respectful. I think this is probably the most personal issue that has come before this board in the recent past. And I do want you to know, we appreciate that. We hear that, and we're trying to be very deliberate, very respectful, very intentional about finding the best solution. So with that being said, I am going to open the public hearing, and we are going to call down the speakers, and I will call the on deck person. If you could watch the clock down here, Ms. Phillips has three minutes per speaker. I'm not going to allow people to go over today just because of the magnitude of the comments. But if you could get lined up, Tim Snyder, you will be first after Mr. Snyder. Debbie Koots, if you'll be ready to go, possibly at another microphone. Anyone is welcome to come forward if you like. State your name, your address, and then you can begin your three minutes of comment.
Madam Chairwoman, esteemed board members, thank you for having me here today. My name is Tim Snyder, and I live at ninety eight Scarlet Drive, Daleville, Virginia. I'm here today to speak about the Orchard Lake Dam and the critical need to ensure it is both safe and compliant. As many of you know, I am running for the Amsterdam District Board of Supervisors. Through that process, I've been invited into the homes throughout the Orchard Lake community to talk about this issue. I want to thank the dam owners, their neighbors, and the broader community for their thoughtful conversations and for including me in them. The message from residents is clear. They want to preserve the dam and the lake. This isn't just a body of water. It's a central part of their neighborhood, where families gather, friendships form, and the beauty of nature enhances daily life. At the same time, the Orchard Lake community understands the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, has reached out to the landowners with requirements to bring the dam into compliance, tools to adjust water levels, regular maintenance, and needed repairs. When I first learned of this issue, I reached out to Delegate Terry Austin and other officials. Community members, including local business leaders like Chip Lawrence, also have asked what can be done to preserve this what can be done to preserve this lake. Delegate Austin worked to keep me informed throughout this process and, in fact, hosted a meeting yesterday, September 22nd, with Mr. Lawrence, DCR officials, and myself. We learned a few important things. There are options. The initial 50% matching grant was applied for with decommissioning in mind, while securing the grant doesn't require spending it. Not using it means no repayment obligation. Other grant options exist with only a 10% match. That's only 10 cents on the dollar. Which can fund risk assessments, engineering, and construction in an attempt to preserve the dam and lake. These can be awarded simultaneously. Let me be clear: The first step must be a complete risk assessment. That will define the hazard classification and guide rehabilitation options. The community is not asking to avoid responsibility; they're asking for time to identify and research viable options. This approach will lead to fiscally responsible, technically sound decisions that serve both property owners and the county. I respectfully ask the board to consider this: When Bodatah County purchased the Greenfield Industrial Center, it also acquired part of the Orchard Lake Dam. That ownership carries responsibility, therefore I do not support creating a tax district to cover unknown costs, especially when nearby residents, many of whom cannot use the lake, would bear the burden. Thank you very much.
Debbie Coots. And next, Clark Andrews, if you'd like to go to a microphone.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I'm Debbie Coots. I actually live on Orchard Lake. We own the stream that feeds the lake. I have been there 37 years, and I can honestly tell you, we're on the low end of the lake. When there's a drought, we hardly have any water. I have never seen that end of the lake ever do any destructive damage. So it doesn't seem to get that big as far as full. I'm all for saving the dam in any way, shape, and form. I'm sorry that you all took on this piece of property, and you were unaware that you were actually owning part of a dam, but I do think it's unfair to tax the citizens of just the surrounding area a service district tax. First, you increased our taxes quite a bit, 40%, last year, and to increase our taxes a whole lot more financially is going to hurt a lot of people. I'm under the opinion, and I have talked to a legal source, that if you give a service district tax to an area, that area is to receive a benefit. We're not receiving any benefit. We're losing the value of our homes and the beauty of our property. I also think that when you do a service district tax, I was told that people get sidewalks, streetlights, parks, they don't get their home value degraded. I appreciate you all taking the time to step back and think about things and do proper studies and get more of a background before we make a drastic step. We own the part where the bridge is. I will tell you, people love our lake. They use our bridge for prom pictures, wedding pictures. Everyone is so happy to be there. I can also tell you that I have never witnessed so much anger in a county as I have in the past several months. I can't even walk my dog without people stopping me that I don't even know and going, "We are so sorry. This is horrible what's happening here." So it's just not the people of Orchard Lake. The people of Bodatah County love the area, so I just want you to think about it and don't make any rash decisions. Thank you.
Here Andrews, thank you. And next, Teri Morrison. You'll get to a microphone and be ready to speak next after Mr. Clark Andrews. Thank you.
My name is Clark Andrews, and my wife and I have resided on Ridgecrest Drive for 34 years in the Amsterdam District. At the September 10th meeting, it was stated that a service district is created to improve the neighborhood and/or provide safety. Instead, breaching the dam may cause property values to drop. Neither will these properties be any safer, since none of these homes would flood if the dams were to break. Once the lake is drained, only the properties downstream from the dam will be considered improved or safer, yet owners of these properties are not included in the service district. The county website claims that only 50 homes in proposed service district benefit from the lake. Then why are the residents in the subdivision who live on Orchard Lake Drive, from Glebe Road to the Curve before Meadow Circle, not included in the district? Residents from elsewhere in the county are also often seen in neighborhood viewing the lake and wildlife. So why are only these 50 property owners being asked to pay for the removal of the dam and repair of the lake bed? According to the DCR dam engineer at the September 10th meeting, if the dam were to break, apparently no homes would be affected. There is concern for people who might be on trails at Greenfield and also for traffic on Cotaba Road. Both of these are public access structures. State Code 10.1-613.4 states that the county could be liable if the dam broke and caused injury, and that's because they own part of the dam. Now let's go back and think about who was ultimately affected should the dam break. Since it is mostly public property that would flood, shouldn't the whole county be involved in the solution? Why should Orchard Lake residents alone have to pay for mitigation when they would not be affected more than any others in the county if the dam broke? This is a county-wide problem requiring a county-wide solution. An alternative that many people might not like could be proposed by using the county's 2425 advertised budget detail. By increasing the real estate tax on all Bodatah County residents by a mere one cent per hundred dollars on the real estate value for just three years would bring in an additional $1.6 million to the county that could be used to remedy the dam situation. The grants could be obtained also. So let's compare the plan. The service district would tax me over 15 years $11,630. A county-wide solution would only tax me $166 for three years. I hope you can see that creating a service district for the funding of the Orchard Lake Dam mitigation is unfair and unnecessarily burdened to the 50 homeowners who would be affected. Unfair because they would receive no improvement in the property and no increase in safety as a result of the dam mitigation. Since it is public property, it should be a county-wide solution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Teri Morrison, and next, Michael Casell.
My name is Teri Morrison, and I live in the Amsterdam District. I live behind, I guess, the Orchard Lake area, so we're not really necessarily, I guess, going to be part of that service district. But I will tell you that my husband and I both feel that, really, since it's a county issue, since the county does own a part of it, I don't understand why with all the development that we've seen happening in Daleville, that there wouldn't be enough tax dollars to pay for that. You know, I'm guessing even if it's a $2 million project, there's got to be $2 million somewhere, and if not, we've said ourselves we would have no problem putting in a particular amount of money, as I would, you know, I would think almost every homeowner might do the same. I don't have kids, and yet I pay a school tax. I don't get a benefit from it, but I pay it. And people who maybe don't live on the lake or have no part of the lake, they would do the same as me, pay for something that maybe they don't have a benefit for, but it wouldn't be that much. It wouldn't be that big of an impact. So I kind of agree with the, you know, maybe the 1% increase for a certain amount of time as long as it doesn't stay there forever, but that would be my suggestion too. Just tax all of Bodatah a little bit as opposed to the poor folks that are getting sort of impacted a bunch, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Paul Casell, and next, please, David Johnston. David Johnston here.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Casell, and I live at 19 Meadow Circle in Daleville in the Amsterdam District. I'm here this afternoon because a decision before you would have the potential to unfairly place a financial burden on families like mine. My wife and I, along with many neighbors, strongly oppose the creation of the special tax district. First, while I understand the Orchard Lake Dam has been declared unsafe, I am not aware of any serious attempt to obtain estimates for repairing or preserving the lake, which has been a part of this community for over a century. Before considering removal of shifting costs to residents, I believe every possible option should be fully explored. Second, I'm concerned about the process. I was never invited to earlier discussions about the HOA around the lake and everything till I learned of this proposal from a flyer that was placed in my mailbox. Yet my property is included in the district while others nearby are not, and I respectfully ask the board to explain how the boundaries were actually determined to figure this out. Third, Orchard Lake is private property. Only the homeowners who border it have access. I have no view of it, no use of it, and no rights to it. In fact, shortly after moving here 12 years ago, I had an experience that underscored just how private it is. Was sitting with my dog along the road frontage near the fire department dry hydrant, simply watching the geese land and take off from the lake. We weren't trespassing, just sitting there watching nature. Yet we were approached and told the lake was private property, and that even from that spot, we could not sit there, we would need to leave. That experience made it clear to me that Orchard Lake is not a community resource. It is not open to the public or to residents like myself who live nearby. Because of that, I can't accept the idea that my family should now bear the financial responsibility for its upkeep. Finally, as I understand, the dam is owned partly by a private individual and partly by Bodatah County. The dam must be removed or repaired. The cost should be the responsibility of the dam owner and lakefront property owners who directly benefit. The county deems it as a broader public matter, then the cost should come from the county budget and be shared fairly among all taxpayers, not placed on the shoulders of a small group of residents. In closing, this proposal would not only be unfair, but also risk reducing property values by making our homes harder to sell compared to others in the county. Respectfully urge the board to reject the special tax district and instead pursue solutions that are fair, transparent, and equitable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnston, and next, Chelsea Wimmer.
I'm going to start off too by letting all my neighbors who are here, no offense to how I feel about this, but I'm going to let you know here. My name is David Johnston, and I live at 816 Orchard Lake Drive. I would like to speak to everyone about the proposed ordinance to establish a service district for the Orchard Lake subdivision for the cost of removing the dam that the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation says does not meet the safety guidelines that they have established. I have lived here for over 20 years. My property is across the street from the homes that border the lake. I have never used the lake for anything. It is a private lake owned by the people who surround it. You can tell this by counting the private property signs that surround the lake. There has never been, in my 20 years here, any public access or HOA controlling the lake, so for you to try to tax me to pay for its removal is ridiculous. I have gone on the Bodatah GIS application to verify the property lines for all the homes that surround the lake. Some of them own larger lots than others around the lake. Some of them own lots that go all the way across the lake. Others barely own a piece of shoreline. Mr. and Mrs. Fraze own most of the dam, with Bodatah County owning a smaller portion. The way I see it, Mr. and Mrs. Fraze do not want the liability of the dam if it was to breach. Whether it was restored to Virginia DCR codes or not, it is mainly their call. There is something that has bothered me about the whole deal, and that is how Bodatah County has acted about the situation. It seems to me that they want to control all aspects of the problem except one part, and that is to come up with some Bodatah County money to either fix the dam or remove it. If this is a safety problem that has been stated so many times by Virginia DCR reps, why doesn't Bodatah County care about the people who live in the path of a dam breached flood? Besides the grant from Virginia DCR, which we found out at the last meeting could be a larger amount and could be applied for again, there are other ways to find funding for fixing this problem besides taxing the people that is going to hurt the most of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea Wimmer, and next we'll have Dominic Rochella.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Chelsea Wimmer. My family and I reside at 36 Meadow Circle in the Orchard Lake subdivision. I'm here to communicate my disagreement with the proposed special tax as well. I am aware there were many mistakes prior to this, one being the lack of HOA, and two, Bodatah purchasing a piece of the dam unknowingly 30-some years ago. But... Sorry. I was only made aware of this issue a few months ago, and it's my understanding this has been going on for three years, and I assume because I'm not a lakefront property owner, I didn't, you know, it was a need-to-know basis. Hindsight's 2020, though. The issue now has reached the rest of the subdivision, and I don't see adding a special tax to those who have never had access to the lake so the dam can be breached is the right option. I don't understand how all of Bodatah just reached, just received a huge tax to increase, and now you want to add to that. My household alone is paying almost an additional $1,000 a year, and now you want to add roughly 600-plus to that. While we have two incomes, not everyone in our neighborhood does. We have, we have single-family and fixed incomes. We have people just starting out and ones living out their golden years that do not want to be taxed out of their homes. And it's my understanding that nobody wants to have this liability, but it does seem that the majority of the people want to keep the lake, whether that be, of course, that is up to Bodatah County and the Frazes as well. But with that said, just based off of some numbers I got the other day, the 2020 census showed that there were 3,000 homeowners in Bodatah County. If you divide that out to 500,000, which was what we were looking at, you're looking at $167 per person, and that pays for it in one year's time. So I agree with the gentleman before with the one cent change for a year or two to fix that, because you're talking about, Mr. Luckbee stated, you know, you don't want to pay for something that you don't use. Well, there are many people that didn't want the sports complex, that don't get to utilize the sports complex because it is always booked for travel teams. Our county kids can't even use it. Please tell me how that makes sense. But I think that about covers it, because I don't want to pay all of this, and I think there should be another resolution. And I think that you should vote no today because it sounds like there's more options for the grants, including Mr. Snyder's recommendation that there are ones that only require you to do 10%. Thank you.
To Rochella, and next we'll have Pam Ramey.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Dominic Rochella. I live in Amsterdam District around the lake, and I am against the formation of the proposed tax district. Part of my objection is the glaring omission from the people in the proposal. You know, the very reason we're having discussions about the Orchard Lake Dam is the risk associated with properties, both current and in the future, the properties downstream of the lake. Now those properties must certainly be aware that there's a dam in front of them. Now those properties must certainly be aware that there's a dam in front of them. Being there, they tacitly accepted that risk. The risk is associated with those properties. There is not a single property in the proposed district that carries such risk as well. It is rational to think that the downstream properties want to alleviate that risk. If they want to relieve, alleviate it, then they should participate in the cost. Don't do that. They should be part of the special tax district. In fact, it could be argued that they should bear the full burden of the cost to eliminate the dam, to alleviate the risk associated with it. They have the risk, they want to eliminate the risk, they need to pay for that. With all that being said, here's another idea. Expand the boundary of the proposed district to include the full county. The county has ownership positions in the two dams, two dams in Bodataut, Greenfield and Orchard Lake. These dams feed the same downstream area. In my opinion, the county should take full ownership of Orchard Lake as it has Greenfield. Treat Orchard Lake the same as what will be done with Greenfield Lake and Greenfield Dam. Fund the remediation or breaching from Bodataut General Funds and state grants. Now, someone's asked about the ongoing administrative responsibilities as listed by the state. Well, it is a straight shot to utilize current administrative assets within the county. They have to, they have to do the same administrative process for the Greenfield Dam. It's a straight shot to donate for Orchard Lake. Let me leave you with a thought. Take ownership, remediate Orchard Lake, remediate Greenfield Dam to state standards. Touting these lakes in county marketing campaigns. Declare, we care about wildlife, we care about nature.
Thank you.
Pam Ramey and next Callie Sturgill. Callie here. Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Pam Ramey and I do live on Orchard Lake. I just wanted to say something from the heart and that is we bought where we bought the cause of the lake community. It is a beautiful place to live. If you've ever not experienced it, I'm sorry because I would wish that everybody could honestly. The thing that bothers me the most about this whole thing is that I felt like I have come into a lot of coulda, shoulda, woulda meetings. And I'm happy to hear that you all have decided at this meeting to, that we definitely need to pursue other avenues and get a lot more information. I think that is absolutely what should have been done one or two years ago. Thirdly, I do, would, would very much like to find out about preserving the lake. I see a lot of, unfortunately for me, building up going on around the Daleville area, even though Bodataut is over a 500 square mile area, it seems like everything is being crammed into our wonderful little hometown city of Daleville. And I, I quite frankly do not understand that, just like I didn't understand why you would go past the planning commission and approve a wall while coming into our neighborhood. Having said that, I do hope that some progress is made on researching preserving our beautiful dam. Bodataut should be just as interested in preserving areas of beauty and peace as it is industrialization and commerce. I firmly believe that it's the reason I moved here in the first place. I do not want to live in little downtown Roanoke. So please, I, I implore you, take this seriously and do a lot of homework. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Callie Sturgill and next we will have Anissa Sein.
Hi, my name is Callie Sturgill. I live at 171 Ridgecrest Drive. My husband and I look, have looked over in Bodataut to buy a house for over three years. When we finally found this house on Ridgecrest Drive, we thought it would be our forever home to start our family. However, since buying the home in Bodataut County, our taxes have nearly doubled since the assessment. When we bought the house, we budgeted for what our properties taxes should be and we assumed they would stay around the same. They rose over 50%, over $2,000. Then Bodataut County, if they issued a special tax, that would spin, send us in a tailspin trying to figure out how to pay for this. As we have two kids, our two-year-old and a four-month-old that are currently in daycare and we pay over $2,000 a month. If you were to issue the special tax, we would have to move. We would not be able to afford to live in the house, what we thought was going to be our forever home. I, among many other in our neighborhood, do not own any part of the lake. I can't see the lake from where I live. We're also not allowed to utilize the lake as a private, private property and has posted signs along the entire lake. So I'm wondering why as a citizen of this neighborhood that has no right to use the lake as many other citizens who live in Bodataut County, why should I have to pay a spot, special tax to help remove something, help remove the dam on something I have no right to use? Also, the developed area that is below the dam is, that is at structural risk is just a park. Why are the people below the dam not included in the special tax? As they're the ones benefiting from the breach the most. If the downstream houses envelopment of the dam is, is a concern, then why is Bodataut County letting the homes been built in a floodway? No one in our neighborhood would be affected if the dam was to fail and release water. I noticed that Bodataut County did not include the entire neighborhood in the special tax area. How can you make only a certain amount of property owners pay for a dam to be removed and not the entire neighborhood or the, or even the county? Ask yourself this, can alternative things be done in order to get this dam in compliance? Why are the citizens of this community being stuck with a bill when Bodataut County owns also a part of the lake? Why can't Bodataut County not either come, neither help with the dam getting compliance, buy the dam portion from the parcel owners? Or even pay to remove, help repay, remove the dam? Bodataut County should not be, expect the individual homeowners to foot the bill. I would ask, I would ask you to vote no against the special tax district.
Thank you. Anissa Sein and then Greg Sutherland.
I think a firm decision could be made by the board today to vote no for the special tax district. You have heard our voices, you've had our notarized signed petition of 84% of the homeowners are against the special tax district. We understand and we make mistakes. The county did not know they owned it for the 30 years and now a fee is due. It should be spread over, whatever decision is made should be spread over all of the residents of the county, not a select few, especially because as many people have pointed out, if the dam broke today, none of those in this proposed district would have their structure flooded. It just doesn't make sense. The flooding would happen in the 133 acres the county owns on the other side of the dam, which is currently zoned RM, which is like R3, high-density residential. And the dam is not even rated, which is why the county could only go for the $500,000 grant in order to be eligible for $2 million. To either upkeep or take down the grant, you have to do the inundation study. So as Tim Snyder said, that is the next step. Why isn't this dam being taken as you did in Greenfield? You spent $31,000 to do an inundation study for Greenfield. You've now done some work to upkeep it, but you didn't tell everyone in the industrial, Greenfield Industrial Park that they had to be in a special tax district because you had an outlay of an expense for a dam that you owned in Greenfield. So special tax district does not apply. It is supposed to take a benefit. It doesn't have a bend up benefit to those who have been encircled in the district. So please read and look at the petition we gave you. The last page is a letter of support from Terry Austin for our position. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Sutherland and then Donna Mitchell.
Hi, my name is Greg Sutherland. I live in the Amsterdam District. I'm here today to speak out against the special tax district. I think it is premature, after listening today, to, to follow through with that. Even in the future, I think we have way too much work to do to identify remediation, repairs that could be done to keep the lake. If the, if it does, we do go forward with keeping the lake and there is cost, that falls on the Bodataut County. You owned the dam, you've owned it for 30 years, whether you knew it or not, it's your problem. It's your problem, the owner. So I expect you guys to pay for it. If you need additional ways to pay for it, where there are, you can get more DCR grants, has been explained here today. But maybe we look at other ways. If it's $500,000, maybe there's ways of a... This is difficult to say, but maybe there's ways of taking property that, that is owned by other people, the Frazers, and as public interest and paying and having them have that property sold to pay off the difference in, in the cost of the repairs of the dam. Then turn that into a public access as the fine neighbors of that lake have expressed they have no access to. That could be done through public means of taking property and turning it for the public good. That is all I have to say, but I am against this tax district. You have way too much work to do before you can vote on this and are the DCR grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Mitchell and I live in the Amsterdam District on Orchard Lake Drive. I'm just gonna speak from the heart as homeowners. A lot of the individuals in that neighborhood were seniors now. You did an assessment, we had a huge tax increase. And then we turn around and we were talking about increasing our taxes again. You know, we're on social security. Where do we get all this extra money? This is really hard to deal with. We don't have any use of the lake. We can't go on the lake. You can't really see the lake anymore in Orchard Lake Drive because all the trees have grown up because it's private property. We just, you know, I just feel bad for everybody, even the Frazers. This has been a terrible situation and there's got to be a much better answer to what we're being hit with. We knew nothing about this. This is a study for three years. The majority of the residents knew nothing about this and we're all in a panic. That's the truth. That's just the truth. Thank you.
Mitchell, is Dennis Mitchell here to speak as well? You pass? Where are you? There, okay, thank you. Robert Kemp. And after that, we will have Rachel and/or Jeremy Walker. Or, yeah, Walker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Board Supervisors. We're in a complex and a, as they said in the meeting, a conundrum, if you will. I've never experienced neighbors against neighbors. It's a terrible thing. I recently retired and I'm in the Amsterdam District. I'm friends of Orchard Lake. I almost fear for walking around Orchard Lake because everybody is all in the flux with this situation. And it seems like that, I guess in 1995, you bought the land from the Blunt family. I think that's the history of things. And so going forward, you didn't have a clue that you owned the dam, a portion of it, 25%, 1%, whatever percent. My concern is the DSA, I think that's wrong, includes the 47 homes. They represent about $23 million in terms of 2024 property value. From your perspective, it's a quarter of a million dollars in tax revenues. From my focus, my concern is you as a co-owner, the Fraser are good people up here, as well as the 47 DSA opposed residents. When you look at the distinction between the Frazers and Bodataut County, it's a huge difference. What I mean by that is, is that the good people, the Frazers, yes, they are co-owners of the dam. However, unlike Bodataut, Bodataut, the Frazers do not receive any funds from Bodataut residents. One might look at the 1995 average price of Virginia home for $114,000 in 1995. That would be a value about, if you look at the 47 residents, about $38,000. Right now, this, this, and their properties are valued at $23 million and that would be about a quarter of a million dollars. My whole thought process in terms of a solution, and I, I really do like the one cents, but a better solution is Bodataut County. And what I mean by that is, is that you have past reserves. I've heard up to $30 million. This is truly a one-off situation. So whatever emergency fund that you do have, that's what I would like for Bodataut County as a new resident in 2023. I would like Bodataut County to pick up to a tab. As one of the members here said, you know, it's on the backs. You didn't realize there was a problem, but that's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Walkers and next there will be Diana Moser. You're gonna pass? Rick Painter.
It's an opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are Rachel and Jeremy Walker. We are in the Amsterdam District. We live at 219 Ridgecrest Drive. We do oppose the special tax district and the breaching of the dam as well. Orchard Lake is a beautiful feature in Bodataut County. We enjoy walking around it and many people in the county also enjoy driving through the neighborhood to see all the wildlife the lake has attracted. We are heartbroken to hear that the removal of, the possible removal of the lake, as it's a beautiful feature in the county and we're saddened by all the wildlife and habitat is removable or destroyed. We think that by keeping this beautiful places such as this will benefit the entire community and is what makes our county a beautiful place to live in. We do not live on the lake. Our home is across the street from the lake. From our location, we do not even see the lake and we do not have access to it. However, the proposal has us included in the special tax district for those being taxed for its removal. It is not right that we are being charged a hefty tax for over 15 years for something that's not in our benefits. Our home is located on the higher point in the neighborhood and if the dam breaks, we are not at risk of being flooded. However, the homes that would likely be flooded and benefit from the repair or removal of the dam are not being charged any tax. Why is it okay to charge us additional taxes but not other Bodataut County residents that would be affected even more? There has not been enough information relayed to us on how much effort has been put into attempting to maintain and keep the lake. We were not reached out to about the HOA to contribute to maintain the lake or what that would entail. At no time were we ever approached to be part of any discussion about the dam by the county or the community. When discussions were supposedly held, no one included us as part of the community and we were not considered part of the community until our tax money was needed to help pay for the removal of the dam. Now we are being asked to pay taxes for something that has no benefit to us at all and will instead decrease the value of our home and in our entire neighborhood. We believe it's unfair and unlawful for our county to ask us to pay for this and we believe it's a county-wide issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Following Rick Painter, we'll have James Cooper. James, are you here? Wonderful.
First off, my compliments on showing some leadership and realizing that you hadn't done your homework and that you're gonna get that done first. I appreciate that. And that has changed my original comments for this section. One of my concerns is I live in the Rainbow Forest area and I know that the Rainbow Forest Lake has been under attack. There's also Forest Lake and there are other small residential lakes around the county. So this is... So this is an opportunity for you to find creative ways instead of the old taxing spend of the Democrat approach, to find creative solutions. And so this special district, I think it sets a bad precedent. When you set a precedent, that means that's the way you would do it next time or the way you would justify doing it the next time. And I could see you doing that to hundreds and hundreds of homeowners in the county with around every one of these little old lakes that are around. So instead of looking at adding taxes because you're already taxing most of us out of our homes, you've heard from senior adults and young families that are saying, we can't afford this. And at the same time, I'm seeing gross mismanagement of funds on the county level. A few years ago, actually before Gary King, our county debt was under 10 million. It's now somewhere in the neighborhood of 120. That mismanagement is what's created this problem. Now, as the Board of Supervisors, you are charged by the county and by the state, by our policy manuals to manage the administrator. He works for you. So there needs to be some administration from the board, some supervision. That's why you're called a supervisor to adjust some of the financial. I think if you adjust the financial mismanagement, the overspending, the overpaying of salaries, you know, I would, I would think you could pay this or at least you could have if you hadn't dug the hole that we're in now. But you know, the first thing you say when you're in a hole, the first thing to tell you to do is stop digging. So now it's a good time to stop digging, start making some adjustments. I can tell you from personal experience, if someone wants the job, they will do it for a lower salary than what you're offering them. If they have to have that high salary, they don't really want the job. And that's from personal experience. I've made that move a couple of times in my life. So I encourage you to find creative ways to where there is no tax burden placed on the county because you've already taxed us almost out of our homes to pay our administrator almost three times the median income of Bodotot County. So that needs to be adjusted too. Okay, that's, that is the responsibility of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Here Cooper and next Linda George.
Thank you. I'm Jim Cooper again, and I live across the street on Orchard Lake Drive, not on the lake itself, but I can see the lake and I love the lake and I definitely don't want to see it go. And I think it'd be wrong for Bodotot to let it go. But in brief, in my understanding, government is here to serve all the citizens and maintain the county's services and land for the benefit of all of us. Fire and rescue, schools, parks, stormwater, law enforcement, libraries. We don't all use all those things, but we all know they're necessary. And so we all work together. Okay? So the beauty of our county, as we've heard, attracts many people. We love the beauty of Bodotot. We moved here, I moved here, I'll be honest. Lower taxes, beautiful place to live, you know, quiet, beautiful scenery. Okay, so as we've discussed, who benefits from the demolition of the dam? We certainly don't. We lose property value. We lose the beauty of the lake. We may have to move because of a special tax district because we can't afford to pay the extra tax. The whole neighborhood is going to go down. It's not good for Bodotot County. You're going to have a lower tax base, okay, from that area. The ones downstream do benefit, so I feel like they should be a part of that. The whole county benefits. The county owns part of the dam. Buchanan needs a new fire truck. The county pays for it, right? I'm part of the county. I'm paying for Buchanan's fire truck. I don't get any benefit from Buchanan's fire truck. So it's a community effort. Okay, and unfortunately, the county does own part of the dam, good or bad. Can this water be used? I know Google wants 8 million gallons of water a day. Can this be a reservoir? Can it be used somehow to help with that cost of that project? I think these are things that need to be discussed. If development wants to come, and we know it's coming, WAWA and Publix and more, that's fine. Development's going to come, but let the people that want to come pay their own way. If you tell them the streets need to be 10 foot wide and the turn lane needs to be 30 feet long and you need curb and gutter and you need to upgrade the sewer, that's their choice. They're going to come, they're going to pay that because they want the revenue. So put the burden more on the people coming than on the taxpayer. I just don't want to see everybody move. I mean, people are going to say, well, I'm not going to pay that special use tax. I'm going to move. That's, you know, some of us will have no choice. Some of us will just make the choice. And I feel like the bottom line issue is more of a trust issue. We count on the government to protect us from big things like this. Call it insurance, if you will. We're not prepared to take this hit. Okay? Thank you.
Good George, next Terry Broccoli.
Good afternoon again, Board of Supervisors, Madam Chair. My name is Linda George. I'm actually running as a write-in for the Bodotot Amsterdam District. And so I think, I do want to clear up a few things because I think there's been some, there's been a lot of comments and I think that not knowing the history is important. So I just want to spend a minute saying that there were two meetings in 2023 where the DCR engineer came in. He did show us one proposal and that was to breach the dam. That was the only thing he educated us about. And at that time, we all asked a lot of questions. A proposal or just an introduction to an HOA would help was about the extent of the conversation. So just so that's clear, it wasn't like a discussion. The second meeting was had. I was out of town, but the people that were there, again, HOA was never discussed on the table with a presentation, with, with facts about how to do it with anybody. And I did offer to help back then in any way that I could because I knew how to fundraise. I do some of that from a job. So, so I just want to clarify that because people are under the impression that we knew all of this. We didn't. And then two years passed and behind the scenes, there were things happening with the grant. None of us knew. Basically, everyone found out when it was on the news. A third meeting was held. We received certified letters in the mail that we were the only ones invited. We didn't even know who else was invited. We were just told, you know, it was a closed meeting and that was initiated by the Frazers. So those are the three meetings that were had, none of which there was never a discussion about HOA. So I just want to clarify that because it keeps coming up. But I also want to say another just resounding thing from the beginning of this is, I do wonder, and I'm sure everyone else does in our area, how, when the DCR engineer stated that he didn't even ever do this sort of a draining of this size lake, who called them to even bring them to Orchard Lake? How did they find out about it to begin with? Because there are so many lakes that are in Virginia. One has to question whether there was something behind the scenes just simply because we've been living here all these years and all of a sudden, you know, with all these things that are happening with construction, suddenly we're the hotspot and we are being looked at. So again, from the beginning, there wasn't a thorough investigation. There was no, there was just, this is a breach and we all asked questions. I think also in addition to that, I think we would all be happy and I hear everyone saying that if Bodotot County was willing to accept the responsibility of the cost that they did not give towards the 30 years of not maintaining their area. If they were able to do any sort of statistical and informational evaluation financially of the 30 years that they did not maintain their part of the lake and they came up with a number and they told us, well, we will put that number towards the 500 or whatever end was happening. But if we end up with having to go forward with any sort of future grant and Bodotot has to lay money out, we, I believe that we would love to see Bodotot accept responsibility for that. Thank you.
Josh Schiller will follow Ms. Broccoli. Joshua, are you here? Great, thank you.
There's a few things that I would like to say. For the life of me, I'm not quite understanding why you didn't know that you owned the dam and how all of this started coming up in the last two or three years when all the planning was going on for Google. I'm going to say, Google, 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 get the money from Google. The county of Bodotot, I believe, should take over the dam from the other couple that owns part of it and it should be county. Now, over the years in this county, I have watched the money just be squandered on crazy things and not our infrastructure. You know, we got the courthouse going on right now. Look at all the money that that's costing us because we did not maintain it. We haven't maintained the schools. We haven't maintained the parks. So I believe that the county should take this over. And I also am in favor of having Google pay for the water that you are planning on giving them from that lake. You're giving them water from that lake and you're also giving them water from Carvin's Cove. Google needs to pay for it. These people who want to come in and do business in this county need to start paying for it or we don't need them. You know, you guys, we've been talking to you guys about this for years. And now we have all these apartments that are empty. Where are the people coming from? Like what industry do we have in this county to fill up this amount of apartments? I don't get it. The transparency really needs to be opened up in this county. And like many people have said, the trust for our electives in this county is gone. And I'm really hoping that in January, when we get some new supervisors, that maybe we can get some of that trust back. And, you know, as far as the money goes in this county, it is just being squandered and it's paying ridiculous salaries to a lot of people in this county. We were doing just fine 10 years ago. Now all of a sudden we're in debt. You know, you want to roll over $30 million into the next year's budget and just all this crazy stuff that's going on and you guys don't even talk to us about it. You just fricking do it. Those days are gone. You guys need to be accountable for what your actions are in this county. Thank you.
Overstreet.
Hi, my name, my name is Josh Schiller and I live at 21 Ridgecrest Drive in Orchard Lake area. But I, as many of the other homeowners, I'm not on the lake. Actually, if you drive to my house from here, you wouldn't see the lake. You'd get to my house, you could leave, come back and you'd never see the lake. So when we're talking about the service district and having my, my home included in part of that service district, it's not right. It's not fair to do it that way and I agree with, you know, many of the other people that have said the same thing, that, you know, it just needs to be spread out over the entire, you know, county would be really the only reasonable and fair thing to do from that standpoint. The, one of the other things that I, you guys were talking about was also the, the grant, which one of the things that I think was mentioned in there was about that if we accept the grant, we don't have to use it, which I was at the other meeting and that's what they said. But they talked about the timeframe though, is if they accept it, it has to be completed within two years and then maybe a one-year extension. So my concern with that would be if, are you under a time crunch then to be able to get the other things done? I want, even though I can't use the lake and I can't see the lake from my house, I want the lake there. It provides value to those homes, which then provides the value to my home as well. So I don't want to see it go anywhere and I would love to see them take the necessary steps to see what is, what can be done to keep the lake there. And I'm happy to hear that it sounds like you guys are willing to do that now. When at first, when I came to the other meeting, it didn't sound like that was even an option. So I do think that you guys need to really take a look at that and listen to everybody that's saying it. And I know I'm echoing the same things that a lot of these people are saying, but please hear what we're saying. We need you guys to think about this and think about what those other options are. And the cost that goes with that should be the county, not my house. They can't see or touch the lake or do anything about it. I think that's about it. I think everybody hit everything else that I needed. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Believe it or not, our last comment is, round of applause, Tim Overstreet.
Oh, yes. My name is Tim Overstreet. I live at 426 Orchard Lake Drive. And I actually had sent in an email and I really didn't know if I should even talk because I think I covered it in the email. But it looks like as far as the benefit, when you're doing a, forming one of these special tax or special service tax areas, that there has to be benefits provided that it's on the county to say how I'm benefiting. And that's, I mean, it breaks it down, I guess in 15.224024, a description of benefits. And I didn't see any list that gave a benefit to me to say, wow, my parcel benefited from this. And I know these can be set up and they can be a benefit to people if they're done the right way. But I think I'm using it in this capacity is not right. So I'm opposed and I just wanted to make sure that when it's actually formed. And I think Mr. Mormon said that it was arbitrary drawing of boundaries that nothing official had been done. It was just someone drew arbitrary lines. So I would really like to see really that someone steps up and does, you know, more description of, you know, if, but I'm all against it altogether. So I'd rather not see anything from here on out. So that's why I'll be.
Thank you. I think with that, we will first close the public hearing. And now I would ask for any discussion response from the board.
Teague? I just, I still come back to, I'm not in favor of a special tax district, just not, no, think. I think if we're looking upon acceptance of the grant, I would agree upon special conditions, my setting.
So we'll move back to that in a moment. Any response regarding the public hearing for the tax district? Anybody want to make any comments?
And is there other ways we can look into this?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take a couple of things. Obviously, I took a lot of notes. I think you brought some excellent points up for consideration. And, and someone said, please take this seriously. Believe me, we are taking this seriously. This is not being taken lightly. This is something to be really thoroughly investigated and worked through. I want to assure you that we're doing that. Not, this is not a cursory matter. As I said earlier, it's probably the most personal issue that's come to us in some time. So I would ask that you give us some grace and, and let us do some work and more work than has already been done and look for other solutions. At this point, we had discussed a motion to direct staff to take on some of this. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion at this time.
So move.
How would you like to phrase that? Give me some words. I need some words, Mac.
I think there's, if we can direct our staff to evaluate grants. I mean, just for instance, if it's, if it's a dry well, is there an opportunity for the fire department to look for a grant to have money go into the setting? Or, I mean, that's just a very simple, small grant, but there's opportunities, I think, all over that we can all look into. And is there an opportunity for Roanoke Gas to be putting in some money and having some valuation on this setting? But I think there's, there's spots everywhere that could be a contribution to the safety of the lake and the saving of the lake.
And to me, the first, I think the first thing I would think we need is, is a formal classification. And I know that will cost.
Maybe, maybe what ends up doing is, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that you're directing staff to look at alternatives. And to do that, we would need professionals to help us in that, in that role. So we would end up procuring, I would guess, the services of professionals, engineers and people of that sort. And then let them direct us about what we would need to do.
Yes.
As far as that goes. And maybe that's the inundation study. Maybe it's not. Maybe it's something else that needs to be done as, as number one. So if that is the direction of the board, not to, uh, create the motion.
There you go.
Uh, Dr. Scott Horn, but maybe to have staff, uh, look at alternatives as far as the dam itself and funding opportunities that would be associated.
Yes.
So move.
I think those are, are kind of the first two places that we need to start. And, and could we put this already as an agenda item for next month to get an update on where, where we are?
Come back with information.
Come back with information on, um, looking into those. The other thing I asked about last month, and, and I know, and we've talked about this, this is a, a very difficult number and it's going to be a guess at best. But if we had any indication of what, what change in real estate value this would bring about for these homeowners, I think that's important to, to kind of know of at least an order of magnitude or, or what we're looking at with respect to if the lake were drained, how would that change the property values of the adjoining, uh, the folks that adjoin the lake? If we could have, and maybe, maybe that number can't be derived, but I, I, we talked about that a little bit last month.
Uh, I do know that, uh, Mr. Mormon had contacted some folks about the, uh, looking at that.
Yeah.
And it was very difficult to compare, I think, but maybe there is some way of, uh, providing some number.
Yeah. So we have a motion to direct staff to investigate, let me finish, Brian?
A second.
To, and, and investigate, um, funding, uh, alternatives, which will likely start with a formal, uh, classification of the hazard level. That's the motion. I have a second from Supervisor Nicely. Do I have any discussion?
And will we have an opportunity to, today to also vote on the grant?
We're moving back to that.
Okay.
Right after. Yes, absolutely.
Just, uh, comment on, on the motion. I fully agree with it. Uh, I think it's, I'll go back to this, what I said earlier. Look for the best possible solution and be completely open minded about what you pursue without, uh, making judgment too soon.
Yes.
Sometimes you can come up with a crazy sounding idea that when you talk more about it, it makes sense. And part of, part of that whole thought process is, I think, anyway, if we pursue the solution, really put dollars aside for, for, for a minute and pursue alternatives, talk about, and there are a lot of good alternatives that were mentioned here. If we look into those things, quite often the dollars will fall out too and the dollar, grant opportunities will become, uh, uh, obvious and so on. So to me, no holds barred in terms of looking for opportunities to solve the problem. And I think that'll have.
Don't exclude anything at this point.
You bet.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's the motion and the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. We're not done yet, folks. Let's turn back to Agenda Item Nine. We need to get back to the consideration of the grant award by DCR. One question I would like to ask Mr. LaRue, if he could give us a little history. Another comment that came up that I, I do want to follow up on is, is why now? These folks have, have seen this, been around this dam for multiple years. What triggered DCR to automatically, uh, suddenly, seemingly? It's probably not suddenly, but it seems sudden to some. Can you tell us why this dam was identified?
I don't know if the phrases are still here or not.
They left.
Okay. So I, I think that it goes back to either 21 or 22. And there was a letter sent to the phrases from DCR. These, these dams are all across the state and people, uh, several of you had mentioned that they're all across the state and that they are working these in as they can. And so there was a visit from DCR. This is not anything new. DCR has been out there working on this since, uh, gosh, right after the, uh, regulations went into effect, I feel certain, and have identified that. And so they needed to see that there was action taken about, uh, breaching the dam, cleaning the dam up, modifying the dam, doing something with the dam. And so they ended up getting a letter to that effect. And then I think they shared that letter with Mr. Mormon. And so it was some time ago.
So it's kind of routine for DCR to be looking at dams and they're doing that across the state?
Across the state. I think there were lots of those in southwest Virginia. I think that's where Mr. Bricker actually showed a map of, of those at some point along the way, and they were scattered all over the place between here and Kentucky.
Okay.
In, in his district.
Thank you. So back to the grant award. Do we have discussion or more questions for Mr. LaRue? I have one gentleman that has his hand up. We're not going to go back through all these comments, but yes, sir.
On the part I was saying before about the timeframe, if my, sorry, that is, I don't know how long it takes to do the proper due diligence.
To do the project.
To do these other things. Is that going to take a couple of months? Is that going to take a year and a half? Like, and then you have to have it done within that timeframe.
Right.
Concerned is you accept it and then we can't get it done in the timeframe that it needs to get done.
Right.
So maybe it is better to postpone that.
Madam Chair, uh, what we would end up doing is moving to forward as fast as possible with the guidance of professionals along the way. And we would end up understanding what the timeframe would end up being, I would think.
And, and I would, I would hope that we wouldn't start a project that we couldn't complete within the given timeframe. That is not grant funded and not on a timeframe. So we're not going to have any more discussion. We've had plenty of comments. Let's let the board decide and, uh, talk about whether to accept this grant or not.
Do you want a motion now?
The floor is open. Uh, if I have a motion, I'll entertain it certainly. And then we can have more discussion.
I move that we pursue the DCR grant.
The motion on the floor is that we, uh, accept the DCR grant. For up to $500,000. We have a second. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Just to reinforce that, it's, you may know, I'm also on Social Services Board. And with the situation in Washington right now, we have already lost one of the grants that we have been using. So I guess I have to refer back to the old saying, uh, bird in hand, it worth two in the bush.
Yeah.
I agree.
I understand. I, Madam Chair, the one thing that I, I, I'm agreeing to the grant and then if we kind of look at, instead of the special tax, if you're finding, like you said, other alternatives, number one, the other thing is making sure that we apply for the 10% grant.
Absolutely.
When that is up and.
I think that's part of the previous motion that we made.
Yeah.
So just to clarify that with, with our counsel, this grant could be used in combination with other grants that we might receive.
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. And it doesn't have to be used at all.
And it doesn't have to be used at all.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All, any abstentions? That motion passes.
And two.
All ayes.
Yep.
So we have a consent agenda that we can get to. Um, thank you all. I, I do want to say thank you. This is very personal. We are going to be as deliberate as possible. If you think of solutions, I want to, um, emphasize what Supervisor Clinton said. If there are creative solutions that you think are just crazy, bring them forward and let's talk about them and, and see what we can come up with. No more comment on this, but I do want to, um, as you leave, be kind to your neighbors and let's, um, try to, to solve this problem collaboratively. I think that would be the biggest win for everybody. So we're going to go back to our, um, consent agenda, which is, um, number four.
Chair, I assume.
Uh, hang on one second, Steve. I do want to, um, note with the consent agenda, the August minutes have not yet been completed and will be part of the October board packet. So they are not in the packet. So as we approve the consent agenda, we're really only approving item B, the tax refunds. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you for approving the consent agenda. Is VDOT here? Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. No problem. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, uh, Andrew Thorpe in for Brian this evening. Um, so we just have our normal standard monthly update. I'll run through that. Answer any questions if you have them. Uh, so just to kick things off, certainly our resurfacing program has been going on all summer and continues. Um, our contractors do have about another month and a half, uh, remaining, uh, to finish the scheduled work for this year. We know there's a couple of areas that still need to have the work done. We've got some questions from some folks, um, but that work still is coming and is ongoing. Um, they get closer to finishing, finishing that every day. On the traffic engineering side, uh, we do have one, uh, work order that I meant to include on this list. Uh, we're currently doing a traffic study on Bruze Mill Road, um, looking at one of the curves there. Uh, we had some, um, concerns brought up by a local resident on that road and we're taking a look at that. Um, and we're hoping to have some answers back to them here in the next few weeks, um, to close that one out. On the land development side, uh, just a few updates on some various plan reviews. We've been working with county staff on, um, the Blue Eagle Credit Union. Uh, those plans are currently under review. Um, the Waffle House, uh, we did provide some comments back in August and we're just awaiting for a recent middle on that. Um, the 911 complex I know has been, uh, um, an important one that's come through and that plan approval on our side was issued towards the end of August. So that should be good to go. Uh, Solarstar, uh, we do have a previous plan approval in place and that still stands. Uh, Monters Phase Two, uh, we did receive that's the middle back in July and those plans have been under review, although I think I might have just seen an email come through on those. So I think that one now is good to go. Greenfield Residential, uh, secondary comments were sent back to the county in July and we're just waiting on a recent middle from the developer. Uh, on the permit side, uh, just a few permits that have been issued over the last month or so. So three utility permits for various work going on, three private entrances, one special event and one commercial entrance. On the project side, uh, this will probably be the last month that you see these two projects. Um, so obviously the intersection improvements out here on 220 have been wrapped up. Uh, we did just finish cleaning up some final erosion sediment control measures that were out there. So that one is now complete. The full depth reclamation, reclamation in Hunter's Green is now fully complete. Um, we just got the update on that one last week, so that one should be good to go. On the maintenance side, I know one of the hot topics we've been hearing, I know a couple of members of the board have received questions on mowing and grass throughout the county. Um, we did actually just start our most recent, um, primary cut for mowing yesterday. Um, that started down in the Blue Ridge Bon Sac area and will be coming throughout the county. Um, mowing has been a bit of a challenge this year. Um, you know, certainly it's been dry the last few weeks, but we had an overall, a very wet summer, um, which has caused the grass to grow quite a bit. But like I said, our final primary cut started yesterday and that is our third cut, like we do every year. Uh, just some other routine maintenance items. We, uh, performed some sidewalk repair in the town of Buchanan on Main Street. Um, we had a few residents reach out about that a couple of months ago and that work is now complete. Um, for all the areas, we're working on continuing mowing our secondary routes. Like I said, the primary mowing is going on and we're also hitting our secondaries as we work throughout the county. Um, we are grading all of our gravel roads, making sure that we're, we're keeping up with those, um, applying dust control where needed. Again, it's been dried last several weeks, so that has been a topic that's come up quite a bit. Hopefully these few rain showers we're getting today and the next few days should help with that. In the Eagle Rock area, we are patching some different areas on 615, um, trying to make sure that those areas look good. Uh, in Finn Castle, we did complete another sidewalk repair on East Back Street. This was, um, as you go up towards the end of the street, up the hill, the left side sidewalk there, um, that's one that the town had expressed concerns about us for a while, but that one is now complete. In the Troutville area, a pipe replacement on Greenway Hollow Road. Um, and again, just some other of the normal, uh, routine maintenance items, um, whether it's, uh, drainage improvements or pothole patching, um, our crews and all, all the areas of the county continue to work hard and, and keep moving with those. Uh, one other item I will mention is we are starting some of our, uh, snow season preparation. Um, you can never be ready too early and we started, uh, working with some contractors to get signed up. Um, we had our, um, dry runs where we check over all of our own state equipment, uh, two weeks ago, um, and the, the crews in the Bonnetot County area did very well in that. So, um, we are working through that as we go. Um, and with that, I will take any questions the board may have.
Thank you so much. How are the roads in Blue Ridge?
We're okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
How about Finn Castle?
Doing pretty good. And I'll mention, uh, one more time from the people of Finn Castle. Thanks so much for knocking those sidewalks out that.
Yes, absolutely.
They're, they're tickled pink. Um, I'd ask, uh, Brian sometime back, and I know y'all have done a study on Bruze Mill, uh, potentially limiting, uh, the size of tractor trailers basically that are getting off the road and hanging up and doing this and that and the other. Do, do you have any results on that yet?
Um, I don't that I, I have ready for tonight. Um, like I mentioned, we're wrapping up that study on Bruze Mill along with that and some curve, uh, warning concerns. Um, hope to have that answer next, in the next week or two.
Great.
Um, but we can definitely follow up with it once we get that.
Thank you.
How are the roads in the Valley District?
Everything's really good. Um, thank you very much for hitting Hunter's Green. One thing I do want to find out is in Highland Manor, we had the, kind of the sinking of the road there. And I think it was Aqua that did want to pay for it. Where are we at with that? That, that has been there for a long period of time. And the citizens that are living right near this, you know, you replace the curb there, but you still have ground there that's unstable.
Yes, sir. So, uh, we, uh, let me back up here for a second. Um, so I know that one's been going on for quite a while. Um, back during the spring, we had met with Aqua and come to an understanding that we were going to perform the concrete work to repair that with the understanding that they would come in and fix the asphalt work. Um, the good news is from what we can tell, the ground is no longer moving. Really, the last piece of this project is to fix that asphalt work. Um, unfortunately, when Aqua got out there to do it, um, suddenly they had a different understanding of what our prior agreement was. Um, we've tried to have some conversations with some upper levels, levels of Aqua and haven't been successful so far. Um, I think we'll probably try another avenue to see if we can get them back on board. Um, if that doesn't pan out, um, we'll, we'll be looking at some other options to try and take care of that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Steve?
Yes, ma'am. This is something I spoke with, with Brian about and just want to ensure that it got passed along, safety hazard, um, high grass in the median of 220 roughly from Finn Castle to, uh, to Delville. And it looks like it hasn't been mowed. Uh, Brian did get back to me indirectly and said that, um, we have contract work beginning this week on that issue. So I.
Yes, sir.
Want to make sure those things come together.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Um, they should be working through that, um, throughout the county over the next week or so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything I am good? Thank you for the work in the town of Buchanan and, uh, I have nothing else. So we appreciate you and sorry we had a long meeting today.
All right. I understand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I think now I, I would like, Ms. Davis, if I could bring you on down and, and you have a number of items. If you would like, we could do all of those. If you're prepared for that. Wonderful.
Item number six. I want digital representation.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to come back to that. Yes. I'm on it. I, I was looking, I want to get the, the financial stuff, um, done and I thought we would just do all of that at one time and then I'll come back and hit that one. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I will try and be brief while still answering any questions, um, that are needed. So first up, for the month of September, there were no transfer requests. Additionally, there were two appropriation requests. Uh, the first included multiple appropriations to corrections and detention, dispatch and the sheriff's office related to reimbursement of miscellaneous. The first included multiple appropriations to Corrections and Detention, Dispatch, and the Sheriff's Office related to reimbursement of miscellaneous fees. The second is to appropriate funds received from the land sale to Google to community development for the purchase of monitors and a vehicle. This was part of the agreement that we had with that land sale. So it is requested that these appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Any questions on Agenda Item Number Seven? This is approval of transfers and additional appropriations.
No questions. So move. No. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? That motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move on to Item Number Eight.
For accounts payable for the month of September, the total for all funds was $4,278,533.35. This included notable disbursements of $84,000 for paid to networking for future for Merica Software License and Support for Technology Services, and additionally, $213,000 paid to SHI for software agreement. For Electoral Board, there was $54,000 paid to No Ink for iPads for use in the elections. Under Capital Projects, there was $92,000 paid to Avenity for the new tax system. Let's see. I think I might have. Yep. I'm sorry. And there's one more, and this is one that will also come up in the appropriations for the next item. The $2,059,952 paid to the EDA. This was related to the VATI grant that we received. So that money goes to the EDA, who then in turn turns it around and gives it to Lumos as part of the broadband project that was performed in the county. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time related to accounts payable?
Any questions on Agenda Item Eight? Accounts payable and ratification of short accounts payable list.
No questions. Move for approval.
Motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That passes as well. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Would you like to go on now with the public hearing, Item Number Eleven?
That is totally fine. I'm ready to go.
All right. You can prevent, and I will open the public hearing.
So this request is for a budget amendment to the FY 2526 budget. It does exceed 1% of the adopted budget. So it was advertised on September 9th and September 16th for that reason, which, you know, also why we're having the public hearing. There's actually two separate budget amendments being requested, and they're set up that way so you guys can vote on them separately. The first item, and I just want to hopefully clarify a little bit because I did get some questions on this. We do have what is essentially a carryforward of unspent funds from fiscal year 2025. I want to clarify that these are not general use funds. These are all special purpose funds that either by law or by administrative decision have been set aside for specific uses. So they have specific revenue streams that are tied to those expenses. So the funding total for that one is $37,364,311. The second item pertains to the funding that we discussed, which will ultimately go to Lumos for the broadband project. That was for the work that was done in the county, and this is based on the agreement that was entered into in November of 2022. So we did receive about 1.4 million from DHCD that will be passed along for that. In addition, there is a county portion of about $660,000. The funding for that, it was originally ARPA funds that were earmarked for this purpose, excuse me, that have since moved into fund balance, since obviously at the end of the year, that's where things go. So that's why it's showing as an appropriation from fund balance now, but that was originally part of the ARPA package that we received. So the total amendment being requested for that one is $2,059,952.43. If approved, these would be paid to the EDA, who would then turn around and pay it to Lumos. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Does anyone have questions for Ms. Davis? Without that, I will open one public hearing, but two votes. Correct? I would like to open the public hearing regarding amendment to the FY, amendments to the FY 26 budget. I have one person scheduled or requesting to speak, but I think she is gone. Terry Broccoli? Anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? I will close the public hearing and ask for any discussion or question, questions from the board.
Madam Chair, if there's no questions or comments, I move for approval of both issues.
Let's have two votes on this. Let's vote first. We have a motion for the rollover. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Now I'd like a motion for approval of the VATI Bodystock County Lumos Broadband Project Number Two. Dr. Scott Horn and Supervisor Clinton moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Both of those pass. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may, I move for a 10-minute recess.
Sure thing. We are in a 10-minute recess. We will resume at 5:30. For the recess, and we're going to pick back up with Items 12, 13, and 14, and then I'm going to go back and get our insurance, Item Number Six. So, Ms. Davis, I'm going to leave it to you for Item Number 12, Consideration of Resolution Provided for Administrative Issuance of Warrants and Conversion to Checks in Certain Circumstances.
Thank you. Yes, so as you mentioned, this request is for, to allow administrative approval of warrants, which are the order to issue payment. So currently, as you know, each month that comes before the board for approval before those checks can be sent out. That level formality is a bit of a dated practice, and it causes a lot of bottleneck issues within Finance Department, getting those payments out on time. So that's really where this stemmed from, and this was the same topic we discussed at the workshop a few weeks back. So essentially, what would happen instead is that this could be, instead, warrants could be approved by the county administrator or his deputies. I did discuss this with our auditors to ensure that we had sufficient checks in place with our AP system as is. And this is outlined in Section 2.2 of the attached Exhibit A, if anyone's curious to see more about that process. So this is really just more about streamlining the process so that we can do the tasks we need to, to keep things moving. Within this proposal, there's also, the policy establishes a limit of $500,000. So that if there is a payment that exceeds that, unless there's some other special exception, it would need to come to the board for approval. I want to ensure everyone that there is no intent or wish to provide any less transparency. The plan is to still provide the board with a report each month following, so that all this a report each month following so that all this information will still be available. Let's see. And additionally included in this is there's also a request to specify those who have the authority to review and sign contracts on behalf of the county. So I think that was just added in because it was kind of a similar lines. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions for Ms. Davis? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? A motion and a second has been made. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I realize with inflation that we need to increase it somewhat, but I think we also need to retain our responsibilities. And I just would like to modify that by decreasing the threshold.
Okay, that that was based on the discussion we had before, but if there's a different threshold that's desired, you know, that can certainly be. Do you have a number in mind?
I was thinking 250.
Okay, can we?
I know that 200 is the number at which contracts need to come to the board unless the entire project has been approved, and then you could have several smaller contracts. It could be more than that. But I know that's generally for a contract. That's how much requires.
And I should also mention as well, this, the appropriation process would remain the same. The appropriation, which is the the legal authorization to spend would not change. So we are not allowed to spend money that has not been appropriated and for that's an intended use. But I guess my question is, Mike, is if we do change the threshold, are we still able to pass it with that amendment? Is that okay? So 250,000?
I grabbed that out of the air. So I had no, and that didn't do any calculations to come up with that number.
Do you know what that will do to your, I mean, you're making this proposal to become a little more efficient?
Correct.
And timely.
Correct. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm hoping that if we try it out and we run into problems, maybe we can discuss again. Or if any of you feel that there's information missing that you need, I'm happy to provide it. But I am very interested in moving this forward to, as I said, streamline this process, free up a little more staff time for things that I think are a little bit more of a value add. So if.
Adam Chair, might make mention, just for consistency purposes, since Mr. Lockaby mentioned about the 200 being the the contract level, is that you could end up taking it to 200 on the the authority on the approval if you wanted to do that. There is zero issue in my mind about that. Katie may have to deal with that in some other way, but it doesn't matter to me as far as that goes.
Well, obviously, I would prefer 250, but I'll do whatever.
250, if we, if we, so is we are amending the motion? Do we need to have a second for that?
Yeah.
So the amended motion is that the limit on this is 250,000. Do I have a second for the amended motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. And again, if there's any information that's needed afterwards, please let me know. We're happy to provide that.
So we will need to go back now and vote on the original motion, which was 500,000?
It would be with the amendment.
Oh.
You were voting on.
On the, on to amend. So now we're voting on the amended, the main motion with 250,000 as the cap.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that is item number 12. Item 13, updates to post issuance compliance policy to name a new compliance officer.
Thank you. Yes, so this is a request to update the county's post issuance compliance policy, which relates to the issuance of bonds and the actions performed afterwards. This will basically, it outlines the formal action and review that we would do following the bond issuance, and it helps to further satisfy that we are doing what we need to do by having a formalized process. Really, the only change in this instance is updating it to put myself as the compliance officer. But yeah, it's good to know it's there. It's good to remind people that it's there. But are there any questions that I can answer, or Mr. Lockaby?
No.
Questions to adopt the updated post issuance.
We have a motion to adopt.
So move.
We have a sec, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Fantastic, that passes. Now, moving on to item 14, consideration of resolution of official intent to reimburse.
Yes, so this intent to reimburse, essentially what this does is it provides us with the option in the future if we choose to reimburse ourselves by the issuance of bonds or financing. So these projects, the Reed Mountain Fire Dispatch, and additional Circuit Courthouse charges are expenses that we anticipate to incur very soon. This is a legal requirement to keep that option open for us in the future. I just want to be very clear because I know there was some confusion about it. This does not obligate us to anything. If we do want to move forward with financing in the future, that would require additional action that would have to come before the board. This, the only thing this really does is it allows us to keep that option open. If we don't move forward with it, due to the timing of when the expense is hit, we cannot reimburse ourselves later. Are there any questions? Did I cover most everything pertinent for that, Mike?
I think so. I mean, the very clearest, to me, the clearest way to explain it is if you're going to do a $10 million project, and you think that you might finance that with a bond, but you're going to get started now and you're not going to do the bond for another year. So you get a year down the road, you've already spent $2 million on the project, and you decide that you're finally going to issue the bond. You can take that $2 million and replenish your funds on hand that you spent in cash out of the bond proceeds if and only if you have issued, you have adopted this type of a resolution. If you don't adopt this type of a resolution, then that's just cash out of your pocket that you've spent. So we call it a reimbursement resolution because you're reimbursing yourself out of the bond issuance. But in a way, it's really just a transfer of, you know, you're front loading your spending on a capital project that you're ultimately going to borrow for.
The bottom line remains the same.
Exactly.
And this, this resolution here does not supersede any appropriation steps we would need to take, you know, approval in front of the board. It does not supersede any other actions or discussions that would need to be taken before we could move forward with a type, any type of financing. It just keeps that option available to us if we wanted to do that in the future. So hopefully, I, hopefully that helped to clarify because I know there was some confusion on that.
I see. The absence of a policy been a problem at all?
Well, I think we're kind of in newer territory with with the scale of projects. So there was one as well for the courthouse, the first one that was at option open. So interest rates don't always time out to the timing of when you need to start a project. Favorable interest rates, I should say, along with other factors. So if those two items don't coincide, it's a helpful thing to have.
And I'll note, the Western Virginia Water Authority, that's constantly doing capital projects because everything's just a huge capital project for them, and they oftentimes, they have several bond issuances a year. They do this once a year when they adopt their capital improvement program, and they have this long list of stuff that they say, we may reimburse ourselves out of a future bond issuance for this.
Okay.
So big localities actually often do that. We've just never been big enough to have to worry about that. So we tend to do a one off when we have one or two big capital projects that are coming along.
Yeah, I see. Got it.
Are there any other questions?
How common is this, this practice?
Well, I think it was Mike was saying it, yeah, it is. Because we haven't had really the scale of projects before, I think that's why there hasn't been as much of a need for it. But it.
Yeah.
And we've done it on a regular basis before, and it's very common in other localities as well.
Can you do just portion of a, of a project? In other words, if we only needed enough money that would only be, say, 50% of the project, and we only do half of?
Correct. So yes, if we decided we wanted to cash fund half of it and do financing for half, as long as this resolution passes, we could still do that. I guess I should have let Mike answer the question, but.
You can, you can mix and match. It can be a 50% match or a 10%, just using, using some of the information from before.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Davis?
Not moved for adoption.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you so much.
And I'm going to bring our friends down now from One Digital for agenda item number six, to consider our health insurance renewal. Mr. Miles, thank you for being early. We are running late. So enjoy. You might want to get a snack. Good to see you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, it is insurance renewal time, and staff is requesting board approval to move forward with the renewal. A committee comprised of David Mormon, Julie Phillips, and myself met with representatives from One Digital, the county's benefits consulting firm, to evaluate the current plans and explore renewal options. I'm pleased to report that these discussions were productive and resulted in a favorable for the county and our employees. To provide a detailed overview of the proposed renewal, I'd like to introduce Paula Pratt, our consultant at One Digital. He will present the key elements of the renewal and is available to answer any question. And you should have received the material in your board package.
Thank you, Mary. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Paula Pratt, as Mary mentioned, and I am your benefits consultant with One Digital, part of the kind of the upper echelon team at One Digital. I've had the distinct pleasure of working with Bodatac for the last three years, even though One Digital's been involved longer than that period, but it's been my distinct honor to work for the last three years. So as Mary mentioned, as to be as respectful as I can to your timeline with everything that you have and the other presenters, I'll go through this very quickly and then offer any type of answers to any questions you have moving forward. So some of the things that I will be talking about is strictly health dental vision premiums for the employees of Bodatac County, and how that's going to be affected for the 2025, 2026 plan year that begins December 1. So first real test is I'm going to test your vision as part of my job to see if you can read all this, you know, small print. The executive summary I'll be talking about from left to right is going to start with medical and pharmacy. So the big overall picture that I want to relay is that with our projections and the work with the benefits committee, if we can call them that, or experts from the Bodatac County side, we have projected a 9.4% decrease in the premiums this year. So that is actually our best renewal we have for this year. Out of all of our clients, we have about 50 municipalities in the state of Virginia. I'm happy to present the best one that we have. And a lot of it goes into that. So I want to talk a little bit about that today. Earlier this year, we actually went to market as part of the procurement side to make sure that your third party administrator, TPA MedCost, was up to market level, both from a pricing and a service perspective. We got about six different TPA quotes back from that. And due to that RFP, we were able to determine that the current incumbent carrier med cost was the best financially, and since they were embedded from a service perspective, that is our recommended recommendation to keep moving forward with the incumbent carrier there. We were able to negotiate a flat increase with them, and also a two-year rate guarantee. So that was part of the RFP process we were able to facilitate. In addition to that, you all have specific stop-loss coverage as a self-funded provider for your employees. You all received another eight different quotes for stop-loss coverage with the incumbent carrier called Tokyo Marine. They are a stop-loss carrier that's based out of Maryland. They came back as the most advantageous rate that contributes to that 9.4% decrease that you're, we are presenting today. With dental, dental unfortunately is going the other way. Dental has a higher utilization that we've seen over this past year. That is increasing approximately about 12%, about 8% in fixed costs, and about 4% in claims. As you can see here on the third bullet point, the admin costs are going up, but they are going up after three years to stay in the exact same. Your dental is with Delta Dental, so they're based right up here on Airport Road over on Roanoke. So they were very advantageous when it came to that. Our recommendation there is keeping the dental premiums flat for the employees and having the county kind of take over that increase. And we have those numbers for you. Vision, there is no change in vision because you are locked into a vision rate guarantee through the end of 2026. So at that point in time, however, we will go to market on your behalf just to make sure that the incumbent carrier, IMED, is not only keeping their benefit levels to market, but also making sure their pricing is where it needs to be. Okay, so as of next year, I will have some more information on vision. And then also kind of moving forward with the short term and long term disability through MetLife, they're currently working through their renewal. Just to be fully transparent, I got it today as we were sitting up here, but I have not had a chance to look at it and see what the numbers are. So I will be able to present that to the Bodatac team this week. Okay? So I do want to give kind of a renewal history that you all have seen over the last six years. For, we use fancy terms called bad claims years, right? And that just means that unfortunately, that the spend for the health plan budget exceeded the budget, right? And that's what last year was, 2024 to 2025. If you remember, last year I had to come up and kind of present a larger increase, and I would obviously like to come up and present to you all. But as you can see, as of the last year to this year, there's been a substantial change, which we love to see. In the self-funded world, you will see about a, every two years, or excuse me, two out of five years, you'll see what's called a bad claims year, where you unfortunately, your claims exceed your budget. That was last year and the year before. So I'm hopeful for over the next three years, I'll be able to come up here year over year and be able to present favorable renewals to you all. But I would be remiss to say, and I wouldn't be doing my job to say that this 9.4% decrease is an anomaly. I would love to be able to come up and tell you, I give you a 10% decrease every single year, but that's not the reality of it. So I do want to say congratulations on that, but also I may not come back with the same story next year.
Big disclaimer.
Yeah. You know, that's to put three asterisks on the end of it. Yep, yep, that's exactly right. So, oh, I'm sorry for the spacing. But from the, from a medical budget perspective, you can kind of see three different tiers here. The blue table is total overall premium that goes into the medical budget. So that is not only Bodatac County's contribution, but the premiums paid by the employees as well. That goes into one bucket. So all in all, for this year, it's 4.7 million. Our projected with the 9.4% increase, that's going to drop to 4.2. So that's a potential savings of right around $444,000. Okay? And that has a lot to do with the employees and the team here being great stewards of the program, whether it's education and utilization. So I mean, that's a huge kudos to the team. The kind of orange pink salmon color, however you're, I see it, is going strictly just the county portion itself. So just Bodatac's contribution. It's right around $4 million, and that's going to drop from that same figure, 444,193, down to 3.5 million. And then we are recommending for the employee premiums themselves, not changing those. Those are going to stay the same. Now, for industry trend, we do like to give you kind of a basis about how you all compare to other municipalities and also private sector companies, not only in your area, but also throughout the Commonwealth. Okay? So private sector, self-funded, which you all are, they average their increase 10 to 14% this year. Now, that is self-funded by itself. Municipalities are higher. Their range anywhere from 12 to 18%. And the reason that is, is typically municipalities, towns, cities, government, schools, offer more richer, more benefit to their plan. That's why everyone wants to go on the, you know, Bodatac. know, Bodata County plan, things of that nature. That is why typically municipalities have a higher rate increase than maybe private sector businesses where they may have a, you all have a zero dollar deductible right now for employees. Those private sector companies may have a $2,000 deductible, $4,000 upwards of $6,000, right? So that is why municipalities usually see a higher increase. Fully insured rates are even higher. Unfortunately, with some of our fully insured clients, we've seen rate increases of upwards to 30 to 60 percent this year, and I can kind of explain to that here in just a second. But you all being self-funded and having the programs that are in currently has really helped the plan, and also the big thing is employees being great stewards of the program. The big reason for the, all these, you know, you see all these commercials about the different prescriptions, different specialty medications. Unfortunately, that comes with a cost, right? They got to pay for that advertisement somehow, right? So inflationary pressures along with increased utilization post-pandemic, essentially that's a fancy word we're saying during the pandemic, all elective surgeries were pushed back, right? And so now that we're outside of the pandemic, you see a lot more of these elective surgeries happening, and so therefore everyone's claims are going up. Okay, that's just unfortunate. That's just the way the world is at this moment. And then rising prescription costs are the three biggest factors to high increases year over year for not only municipalities, but for employers in general. What we see in the Commonwealth, though, the main driver, Robert, prescription cost of that one little subset is the inclusion of GLP-1 medications, the Wegovis, the Ozempics of the world. Those are extremely expensive prescriptions, and therefore they usually bring a high rate increase along there with it. So with you all specifically, this point goes back to the last slide. You've all had a three point six percent over the last six years. That's unheard of. So I think that is a congratulatory measure that we need to really focus on. The way we, way you all did that is, you know, making sure people are using generic medications rather than maybe the brand-name medications or the specialty medication. And that's mostly on the employees to push back on their doctors to say, well, is there a generic alternative that's going to cost me less money and still treat the same symptoms? Right? So that's, it goes back to me saying the employees are being great stewards of their programs. Increasing participation in script sourcing, that is the international drug program that your employees have access to, bringing in prescriptions, and it's actually lower cost and actually filling it through maybe the Kroger pharmacy level that you all have tied to the program. That is another reason why the rate has been so advantageous. And then the last little bullet point is, and I know it's cut off, so I apologize for that, using a third-party administrator, a TPA called MedCost, they actually have a really robust medical doctor network. So they have the same, essentially same network as maybe an Anthem or a Cigna or United Healthcare. Their doctors and their contracts that they have with doctors actually offer a lower payment, but it has doctors have access to more people. So therefore doctors getting paid less, therefore you all are getting paid less. So that also helps. So there may be other TPAs out there that offer more reimbursement level or higher reimbursement level to doctors, but using MedCost is a benefit to you all. So I'm going to breeze through kind of these last three slides just because I want to be conscientious of time. These are going to be the Bodata County contributions, just the county themselves current versus proposed. You can see on all tiers, there is a decrease, and that is our proposal. The next slide is going to be the employee contributions. As I mentioned just a few minutes ago, we're not recommending any changes to those, so therefore everything's going to be staying the same. And the Delta Dental premiums, these are going to be your contributions. As I mentioned, our recommendation is just since there is a decrease on the medical side, which is more substantial than the dental increase, have the county kind of offset that to cover the increase in the dental premiums. And as of that, that is, we have our recommendations on the screen. I'd be happy to go into more detail. I know that was very quick, very high level, but I want to leave time for any questions and be able to answer as many as I can.
Thank you for the good news.
I love delivering good news.
Does anyone have any questions? Very good outcome. We need action here. Adopt a move. Okay, so if there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Fantastic. Thank you again.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. And Mary, I know that is a wonderful relief for you to be able to share this with the employees. That's great.
So we have respondents pointing out to employees tomorrow.
Super. That's two years in a row that they've had no increase in their premiums. So that's wonderful. Really great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to be so late, but thank you for being patient. Thank you very much. Okay, we will jump down to agenda item 15 now and ask Ms. Pendleton to come down for the next three items, unless you're bringing a friend. Fantastic. Our first item will be to consider amendments to the zoning, county zoning ordinance to modify provisions and definitions related to mixed-use dwelling units. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. So as, as you may be aware by the number of text amendments that we've brought forward to you all this year, we first come to the board and seek a resolution in support of staff time and the planning commission's time and energy to hold the public hearings to consider changes to the text amendment. So it's kind of the first stop. So we don't have particularly, you know, written text amendments at this point. We're just asking for the authorization to move forward with staff time. And so one of the things that we had been working on is a recent conversation and request to talk about the definition and standards of mixed-use dwelling. And it's really to strengthen the opportunity to ensure that mixed-use dwellings and the way that they're intended to be calculated is in alignment with the comp plan goals as well as the mixed-use environments in the Gateway Crossing Overlay District. And so what we are really looking to do is to ensure that, you know, sometimes, again, we've talked about with the Gateway Crossing Overlay District and other text amendments, uses change, all kinds of things. We're constantly in a world of change, and we really look to some case-by-case basis. And it's really interesting to me how much of what we do, we are in the gray, right? We think when we're going to get into our world that there's codes out there and they're black and white and it's super easy, and that is just not the case. The majority of our time is this is where we are. And so one of the things that is a little more gray than we would like is understanding the relationship between the mixed-use dwelling uses as well as what would be considered commercial use and commercial space, which would allow for a density waiver for mixed-use dwellings that are on second and higher floors of units, buildings with mixed-use commercial space below. So we're really just asking to take the time to understand that, flush that out, facilitate that, and with your, with your concurrence, take that to the planning commission for consideration as soon as October.
Any questions?
No questions. A move for adoption, motion.
We have a motion and a second to proceed with this. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Michael?
Do we have much leeway in identifying what mixes we want and don't want?
I think I would ask maybe for a little bit more information on what you'd like to see, and we can certainly work that into our assessment.
Okay, the first one that comes to mind is Down Home Pharmacy, the mixed use there. Now, if they were wanting to do something with the second story that we didn't want, do we have that ability to say, we understand it's mixed use, but it's not the mixed use we want?
So it's, it's actually more the opposite, really. The way that the current code is written right now was really taking into account, again, encouraging walkable communities, encouraging opportunities to mix uses in the same structure. So in today's world, if you wanted to build multifamily in the Gateway Crossing area, you'd get a waiver if there was commercial space on the first floor. Where we're running into a little bit of gray area is what really constitutes a commercial use. For example, does an extended stay hotel constitute a commercial use? In my interpretation of the purpose intent of the Gateway Crossing area, it was to provide services, retail, commercial services for the folks who were living in the second and above store. So there, that to me would be the reason that you'd waive or allow for that density to be a little different because you would be having, you having less trips, you'd be having more walkable communities, you'd be encouraging the types of uses at the Gateway Crossing supports.
Thank you.
And, and this is simply paving the way for this to go back to, to go to planning. So there will be opportunity, I think, to, to listen to their conversation and probably to have input and discuss with the commissioners before it comes back to us for more discussion. So I, I would hope that we could take advantage of that. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Thank you, Ms. Pendleton. Now we will move on to item 16. Refer amendments of the zoning ordinance to the planning commission regarding energy, battery, storage systems, and utility infrastructure definitions.
Absolutely. And so if you, if you look at the title and the agenda item of your package, it's a little bit different, and I don't want to be misleading or confusing, but what we have been working on is having Ms. Lawrence here to help us work through some text amendments that have been on our plate that we've not been able to get to. One of the things that we recognized was that we have some much older definitions and some maybe wide-open definitions of utility, utility-related types of uses. Currently, the way that, that we would have permitted battery energy storage systems would have been through a very wide swath of uses. It's not, it's not very narrowed down. And so for that reason, there's no changes. The, the, there's, there is no proposal before us. There is no proposal that we are bringing to you. We are just simply wanting to clean up and modernize the code to make sure that we're in alignment with today's operating environment.
You. Any question for Ms. Pendleton on this agenda item?
Makes sense to me. I'll move for approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That also makes its way to the planning commission. Thank you very much. Item 17, consideration of community development fee schedule back from last month. So if you would like to go ahead and give us the update on that?
Thank you. So as, as you will recall, the, I do believe the board directed staff to engage and to work with members of the board to meet one-on-one or two by two to really go through in detail the proposed fee schedule. We were able to do that and provide additional information to the majority of you all, really just talking about the impact and the comparison of the fees. I wanted to bring two changes to your attention that were not in the original packet. One of them was related to re-reviews for multifamily dwellings or non-residential site plan. The, you know, a big intent of how this whole fee schedule came to be was for re, re-review fees because we tend to, we have some, unfortunately, site plans that are in for their 10th, 11th, or 12th round with us for approval, and that is obviously very time-consuming for staff. And so a little bit of a financial incentive or disincentive, if you will, to try to get those plans approved and a, and have them really come in higher quality to begin with. And so you'll see that change was not in the packet, but is at your table. And then the, the active date, if you all chose to approve the fee schedule, we would propose moving it from October to November, and then of course, doing some social and outreach to our development community to let them know that there is a bit of time, if they're working to submit something, that we'd, we'd be happy to entertain getting those in sooner. And I will be happy to provide any more information or answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions for Ms. Pendleton on the community development fee structure proposal?
Madam Chair, I might just mention that we're looking at this a second time, mainly, I think mainly because of comments and questions that I had, and as Ms. Pendleton said, her staff has spoken with board members individually. They've given me additional information. And I'll just say, my, my major concern had less to do with the detail of the, of the proposed changes than it did with, it was a fire hose, you know, we were drinking from fire hose and that thing. And it was just really hard to absorb all that. So given the intervening month, I'm personally good with it. And I applaud the overreach, overarching theory, which is let's, let's direct the costs where the benefits are and not across the entire taxpaying population. So I think the intent was good. The details were a little hard to follow, but I'm, I'm up to speed on it, so.
Super. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I will do so.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I will just say, I also met with, with staff on this, and it is, it is a lot. I appreciate their time and attention to detail. I think you're, you're really trying to walk a very fine line here to appropriately charge and fairly charge and make use of their time appropriately. So I applaud you. I think you all did a great job in thoroughly, thoroughly taking a look at this. So with that, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations. That also passes.
Thank you very much, very much.
So Mr. LaRue, we're at 18, consideration of funding for maintenance vehicles. Okay, great. Is that what this means? Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure what this. Gotcha. So Mr. Tom Edwards again. Thank you very much.
I'll say good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board now.
Moved on, haven't we?
Yes, ma'am. I am here to present a consideration of funding for maintenance vehicles. Depending on systematic assessment of the county vehicle fleet, staff did not recommend, and the board did not include funding in the current year budget for vehicles as normal practice. While the fleet assessment remains in progress, an acute need for replacement vehicles for maintenance operation is apparent. Currently, we have 12 out of 16 maintenance vehicles that are 10 years old. Many require maintenance, and these vehicles play a critical role, often towing equipment valued between $50,000 and $100,000. And transportation, transporting our staff throughout the community and reliability and safety are primary concerns. Based on the assessment of the operation needs, it is recommended that we purchase two F-250 workbody trucks by procured in preparation for the upcoming winter season. These vehicles would add two plow capacity vehicles. That would bring us to a total of five for critical winter response. Provide practical work vehicles for our tradesmen, replacing outdated F-150s with shell caps that are inefficient for tools and material access. Reduce downtime, maintenance costs tied to aging and repurposed vehicles. Facilitate a 10-year replacement plan that provides a long-term stability and predictability. These vehicles will replace one F-150 that has 250, 15,000 miles on it to be sold on GovDeals and cycle another F-150 that has 196,000 miles down to the building ground supervisor who needs a four-wheel-drive vehicle during inclement weather and to access and to haul materials. He is currently assigned a former law enforcement sedan. And then currently BOCO maintenance only has three plow trucks to clear facility access and parking lots during inclement weather at county libraries and county administration center, sports complex, other facilities at Greenfield, the court facilities, the public safety buildings, and the regional jail, the health department, and various other departments and offices in Finn Castle. In addition to the day-to-day operations, the maintenance department, along with emergency communications and community development, is a vital component to the emergency response operations to the county alongside fire and EMS and the sheriff's office. With the assistance of the county's purchasing department, new and used vehicle dealers across Virginia, southern West Virginia, and northern North Carolina have been solicited for vehicles quotations or quotes. State and cooperative contracts have been researched, and it is estimated that the total cost of two trucks equipped with workbodies and plows will cost approximately $155,000. Staff requests the, the board's consideration of additional appropriations. Staff request the, the board's consideration of additional appropriations in that amount to purchase the two maintenance trucks as described. Is there any, that's?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Edwards?
These vehicles are fully outfitted.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've looked into it, and we've solicited four-wheel drive vehicles, basic models, just work trucks with plows and work bodies on them. So it'll be more efficient and safer to tow and work through. Yes, sir.
You've already received bids.
Yeah, we, we've gotten quotes and prices. We went out, and that's why we know we're in that price range.
They're all pretty close. Are they pretty close?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further questions?
Not a question, but had you considered rolling this into next year's budget?
We did consider that, but due to the circumstances of only having three plow trucks right now, and if we have a large winter storm, and those trucks are older vehicles as well with high mileage. The last two trucks that this department purchased was back in 2016, and one of those trucks has 87,000 miles on it. The other one has 93,000, and the only other plow truck that we have is also 2,000, and it has 131,000 miles on it. So that's why we came to the board to ask prior to next fiscal year.
Any further discussion?
For approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Lockaby, would you like to take agenda item nineteen?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, I wish that our citizen were still here who had asked about the, the matters that are still in, that are right here in the memo. Bodotoc County is being asked by our outside litigation council to approve two opioid settlements. As you know, there have been a series of settlements that come through. Some of the opioid manufacturers and wholesalers are settling off one by one, and while other ones are going into bankruptcy and winding up settling, while other ones still are continuing to be involved in the multi-circuit class action litigation out in Ohio. Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family, which was the principal owners of Purdue, they declared bankruptcy, and the bankruptcy plan of distribution provides for 39.7 million to come to our block of local governments in Virginia. That's been negotiated by our council, along with the Virginia Attorney General and Attorneys General from other states. Our share of that would be 140, about $144,000 to be paid over 15 years. The second one is eight different smaller manufacturers who also have, they have reached the settlement with the Commonwealth and our litigation council, et cetera, et cetera, of 16.4 million to come to Virginia localities, which would be about 60,000 to Bodotoc County. It's paid out over different time periods, depending on which manufacturer it is. These will continue to happen. All of these are tied up with strings in some way. They're not just cash money that we can round into things. They have to be spent in accordance with opioid abatement plans. And I know that the county actually is currently in the process of developing our permanent, I say permanent, our going forward opioid abatement plan, which I guess is going to, the draft will be presented next week to staff before being ready to go to the board. That's where we are.
So for now, any monies received kind of sits there until there is an approved plan for spending that money, and it will likely go back to some sort of opioid abatement.
Correct. And Donna Booth and Katie have to make periodic certifications of what's been done with all of the money. And right now, they're certifying that it's being held in a separate fund for use for opioid abatement stuff. So.
Super. Thank you.
It's actually a lot of work for Donna and Katie.
Thank you very much. And it's not a tremendous amount of, of money for us, so it, the resources that we spend on it are considerable. Any questions for Mr. Lockaby? Do I have a motion to accept, to approve this settlement and participate in both of them?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes as well. Thank you so much. Now we will move on to Mr. LaRue. Could you talk about the Law Office Committee that has been or is being established?
Madam Chair, if you remember, this was the Law Office Hotel Committee that is, was being appointed, and we have solicited folks, and we actually have several of those in, in the room today. So let me just name over these. These have been asked to serve. They're willing to serve. And if you would like to have a, have a motion to accept them, that would be perfectly fine. So the, it would end up being Grace Parker, Steve Clinton, Brandon Nicely, Ed Holt, Patsy Dickerson, Jay Saunders, and also those that would end up helping with this would be Rich Evans and David Mormon and myself.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. LaRue?
Is now the time to bring up our additional possible member? I would like to add to it, Mr. John Alderson.
Any other questions? Considerations? So do I have a motion to accept this committee with the addition of John Alderson?
Move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. I thank you all. Some of you are back there. Some of you are up here. I think this is a very important commitment. And as appropriate, Brandon and Steve, let's have on the agenda updates from this group as discussions pursue. I think that would be fantastic to hear, and happy to see that going forward. Thank you, Mr. LaRue. Item twenty-one, we have two appointments to consider. Bodotoc County Community Policy and Management Team, Samantha Higgins, we are asked to consider appointing her as an alternate for Shirley Thompson, representing juvenile probation court services. Ms. Higgins is willing to serve, and if appointed, it is a two-year term, which would end August 31, 27. Do I have a motion?
The move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And to the Mountain Gateway Community College Local Board, we are asked to consider appointing Mr. Robert, otherwise known as Dizzy Garten, to represent Bodotoc County on this local board. Mr. Garten is willing to serve, and if appointed, this is a four-year term, which will end June 30, 29. So I have a motion. Thank you for the motion. And the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That also passes. Thank you very much. We are now at the time for citizen comment. I have one comment turned in. Mr. Donnelly. Richard Donnelly. No one here? Yes, you can.
My name's Patsy Dickerson, and I live in the Finn Castle area. And I just want to, I'm also representing the VA 250 Committee, along with Mr. Ed Holt here. We would like to thank the board for helping us procure and get all our papers in a row and in line to have the VA 250 Mobile Museum in Finn Castle this weekend. We'll have it there Friday. Doesn't matter if it rains or not, it'll be there from 1:00 to 7:00, and then Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00. And the Finn Castle Festival will be going on Saturday, and we hope that you all can come. And we're having a tea party between 5:00 and 7:00. So come get you some tea. We're not going to throw it in the ground or throw it in the moat or anyplace like that. It, it will be on Academy Street near the Finn Castle Library.
I'm going to make a suggestion, Brent. I'm going to call on you. You haven't been asked to do anything yet, so today. So here we go. Can we get that out on socials from the county? Like, just to?
I think it's already there.
Oh, fantastic. Wonderful, wonderful. Well, I know he'll do a great job trying to help y'all promote this, and congratulations on doing that.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your help.
Thank you. Y'all have a great night. Wonderful. Any other citizen comments? Any board member comments? I'm going to ask for two folks to come down and give us updates. Luke, could you come down and share some, some good news and some opportunity? And then Matt, if you want to come after him and give us an update?
Madam Chair, if I could, just a couple of things that I'll ask our county attorney to take a look at here is, one of the things we looked at is the cottages of Steeplechase. Is there any way we can have some sort of a update on that this next month of where we are with that? Or Nicole?
I was going to say, Mrs. Pendleton and I have been tag teaming on that one.
Okay.
Is, was there another item?
Yeah, there is. And the other one is, we've had some kind of some trash around the GFL recycling bin on Cougar. And I think I made a recommendation if it would be an option for GFL to put that, because it's so close to 11 there, put that and make a special area for the recycling bin to be over there instead on Cougar. Maybe we can utilize that area for parking needed.
David and Greg Hanna and Steve love it.
Good. Fantastic. Thank you.
Do you want us to give the whole board an update on Steeplechase, or just to get together with you and give you a?
Either way. It makes no difference. If I can have an update, that'd be good to, to pass on to them.
Absolutely.
Next week? That would be, you and Martin, let me know when that, I'd love to come. Thank you.
Excellent. Madam Chair, members of the board?
Thank you.
I'm pleased to announce that we have our second annual round of the county's right here in Bodotoc County Small Business Grant Program going on right now. Applications are open until October 17th. Requirements are that businesses be based in Bodotoc County via their Articles of Incorporation, and that they have a Bodotoc Business License or Town Equivalent, and of course, are in good standing with the county. Grant awards range from $2,000 to $6,000. And thanks to Google, we have a much larger pot of money to draw from this year. So I hope we get many applications. Farms, sole proprietors, and businesses with fewer than 100 employees are eligible. Applications have been made easy and are accessible on the Economic Development website, and we have been doing some social media blasts out there to, to help spread the word. Last year, we gave around, I think, $36,000 to small businesses, some of whom used it to acquire vacuum sealers for meat production, new signs for their businesses, buy new computers and software to help expand their business to online markets, as well as financing capital improvements to facilities to increase services to customers. We have about 12 applications at the moment, and we are hoping for many more.
Spread the word. It's a great opportunity. Thank you. All, all small businesses eligible, so go for it. That's great.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Mr. Hinkle, you been up to anything?
What was that?
You been up to anything?
Oh, gosh. Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me. Matt Hinkle, the Emergency Communications Systems Manager, just going to hit three highlights on the progress we've made. We are working, one of the last meeting we had, the award of the RFP for the tower at Reed Mountain. We are now, we've got everything but the signatures for the easement for that with Dynax. They've been great to work with. So that contract with Diamond Communications is forthcoming, I would say, in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, we'll have that squared away. The landfill site, which is the other site that's being built, well, pending the public hearing in a few minutes, if everything goes well with the SEP application, hopefully we'll be moving forward with getting that tower built and, you know, getting that squared away. Those will be the only two towers we have left to be built. So if everything stays on track, we're still looking at probably a June, late June timeframe next year, which will keep us on track for the system deployment late next year. Couple other things on Civils. We're getting the building permits for all the shelters. They've been ordered. They're going to be started being delivered. So we're going to be doing a lot of mountaintop work, a lot of road work. We've got some things we've got to do to repair. We've got some LP gas tanks. We've got to get off the mountains. So we're working with the, the tower owners to get all that done. And then finally, we're in the process of doing the FCC licensing for the actual frequencies. We actually have some studies coming up to make sure we got clean frequencies. That's going to be starting next week. So hopefully that's finalized. We get everything squared away, and we'll really be getting in earnest probably within the next 60 days or so. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hinkle? Great work. I will say, I think we have not had a meeting since the groundbreaking for the center on Reed Mountain. And, and what a fantastic collaborative effort that represents. Public Hairs, paid staff, your team, dispatch. I mean, that's really impressive.
Absolutely. Yeah, it really is. I mean, it's such a unique opportunity to have a multi, you know, disciplined facility. And I think it makes great sense, and it's going to work out really well for everybody.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Okay, shall we move right into our public hearings?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's do it. Only 30 minutes late. So I'm going to turn this over, I think, to Mr. McCoy, because he's walking down here. We have three public hearings. First one for the Buchanan District, and I will.
I've got a PowerPoint for you. It just hasn't been uploaded yet.
That's no problem. Take your time.
I don't think it's going to upload yet. A man much smarter than me will figure this out.
You always want IT in the room.
All right. Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you this evening, I've got a couple of public hearing items. The first one is for a special exception permit request for a rural home business. This was originally advertised as a slaughterhouse, with some changes. It has been changed to a rural home business. So the legal advertising for you tonight is in the Buchanan District. Seth A. and Jeanette Lynn Mals requests a special exception permit for a rural home business on a 31.823 acre parcel in the Agricultural A1 Use District with possible conditions. This parcel is located at 16414 Lee Highway, identified on the tax map as 64-67. This is heard by the Planning Commission this month, was unanimously approved by them, or suggested for approval to you all. It's shown here, outlined red off of Lee Highway. It's a pretty large parcel. There is some topography to this site. Slopes upward from Route 11 before descending pretty Slopes upward from Route 11 before descending pretty rapidly to the creek back there. It has the Mowles home on there right now, and you can actually see in this picture, and I'll show you here in a second, the proposed barn will be in about this location here. It's a 40 by 60-foot metal-framed building, outlined here in the picture for you in that red square, if you can see that okay. The intent is to have folks drop off their deers for processing. Mr. Mowles will do the processing there and provide the meat back to the folks. The rural home business has some conditions in there with our zoning ordinance themselves, so there can't be more than five people there at any one time during the day. He can have up to five full-time employees. He intends to only have, I think, as many as four part-time employees, so we don't anticipate too much of a strain on the existing road network or the neighborhood itself. Some of the suggested conditions recommended by the Planning Commission is undertaking a substantial conformance of our conceptual site plan, which is pretty typical for our special exception permit uses that you all see. No queuing of vehicles shall be permitted to interrupt the flow of traffic along US Route 11. Noise generated by the development shall not violate provisions of the Bodotac County Noise Ordinance. And then our catch-all, that all other specifications and general provisions shall be met as required by the zoning ordinance, and no instance shall this exempt the project from any local, state, or federal development requirements. Happy to answer any questions you might have. I believe Mr. Mowles is in attendance here with us this evening, so thank you very much.
So much. Any questions for Mr. McCoy?
I have one question. By changing to a rural home business, does that change the volume of carcasses?
So the rural home business use actually has that cap of no more than, I think it's five vehicle trips, was essentially one there and one back, so 10 people total. So it actually lowers it from what the slaughterhouse was to begin with. So it's actually reducing a little bit of the actual strain on the development that could be seen there in the neighborhood. If that helps.
Other questions? So I will open the public. Would you wanna, I will let the applicant speak, and then I'll open the public hearing. Do you want to speak? You don't have to. Y'all have any questions for the applicant? All right, I will open the public hearing. I think we have one person. Lee Martell, would you like to speak on this matter?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm Lee Martell. I live in the Buchanan District. And I just want to say I'm so glad this business is here, and I hope that you allow them to expand. That sounds like what they're doing. They're from Buchanan. They're great community members. They're big-hearted people. The business fits the character of the area and the county. We have so many hunters here. And it's a great local small business, and I think it really deserves the county's support. I know the county does try to support small business, and I think that is a trend that's growing. So this business is so deserving of that support. It addresses an activity that's characteristic to this area. You know, you've got your fly fishing there off of the James, and this is something that keeps hunters active in the county. We have so much national forest. It's truly local, and it truly fits the character. And then probably most importantly to me is, this business continues accessibility to hunting for people who've been hunting all their lives. And I don't know if you've hoicked a deer carcass around, but they're pretty heavy if you get a good one. And, you know, for somebody who's been hunting 50, 60, 70 years, and they're getting up early in the mornings, and the joints hurt, and they're tired, it's nice if you can pay somebody else to do that work, and then you can keep doing it for a few more years. So I really appreciate this family for running this business, and I hope that you will approve the exceptions so that they can continue to do it and expand. Thank you.
Thank you. We do hope for a heavy carcass. I think we have one more public comment. Yes, sir. You may take the microphone, state your name, and answer please, and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Praminder Singh. I'm the next-door neighbor to that property, and I really don't know exactly the nature of the business, but I know like it's the one word which I heard that was, it's more like a cleanup of the deer carcasses or other, you know, of that nature. So the building which is built there is really next to the line. I have no problem with the business, but I just was wondering, like, is there a proper plan of disposal or no smell or other things? Because the house is not far away from where this building is actually built. So that's all I have. I mean, I'm not in a pose or in favor, but I just have some concern that there is no false smell or carcasses around the building or nearby the fence. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments regarding our first public hearing? I will close the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak at this point?
Good morning, the Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to be here in front of you. Just for those that have expressed comment, thank you both for your comments. As far as the, or getting rid of the carcasses, we actually have a contract with CNS Disposal. They will actually come and dispose of the carcasses, and we bag them up and put them in a dumpster, and they come out and take them off property weekly. We've done this in the town of Buchanan, the same business, in a leased facility for the past two years, had very little, you know, outside the property. People complain about any smells or anything like that. So we try to do our best, and it is my home, so I want it to be smelling proper as well. So we take pride in that, providing the service for the hunters. And I do hope to expand the business. I want to be good stewards of my neighbors as well at some point in time in the future. And I hope to come back to you guys about some expansion in that business at some point in time in the future. Not now, but a little bit later.
Thank you.
Questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant? Awesome. Any discussion among the Board? I will take the lead and enthusiastically move to approve. I've been waiting a long time for this, so I'm very happy for y'all.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Here's to a busy fall. Thank you. Our second item is proposed tax amendments for Chapter 25 Zoning Ordinance, Section 25-441 telecommunications facility. So Mr. McCoy, if you would lead us through that?
It'd be my pleasure. Good evening again.
Thank you.
And at the risk of Mr. Hinkle stealing some of my thunder talking about SCPs and stuff, I'll run through the tax amendment for you. So tonight, you have a tax amendment, and then a special exception permit and a commission permit. They're all kind of linked together. The tax amendment has to go before the special exception permit, otherwise, a special exception permit can't be granted. So that's kind of why they're here for the order for you. So for the legal advertisement, I might take a pause here because they are kind of long. Bodotac County Board of Supervisors Propose Tax Amendments to Chapter 25 Zoning Ordinance, Section 25-441 Telecommunications Facilities. A descriptive summary of the proposed ordinance changes includes allowance for additional considerations related to height setbacks and other requirements when the telecommunication facility primarily serves a public safety purpose. And in the Amsterdam District, the Bodotac County Board of Supervisors requests a special exception permit with possible conditions and a commission permit in accordance with 15.2-2232 of the Virginia State Code for a telecommunications tower freestanding to construct a new emergency communication system on a 1-acre portion of a 220.09 acre parcel. In the Forest Conservation Use District, the parcel is located at 244 Landfall Road, identified on the tax map as 70-5B. So the proposed tax amendments, currently, the zoning ordinance doesn't provide much flexibility for tower siding. They're a little dated, and they don't kind of meet today's abilities for wireless communication facilities. It overall caps towers at 199 feet and requires a setback of 200% of the height of the tower from off-site residential and 100% of the height of the tower from property lines. That really restricts where these towers can be sited in the county. And when it comes to cases where they're primarily used for emergency communications, it really limits the ability for first responders to have that access to the wireless facilities that they need to serve the community. So the proposed tax amendments before you is to clarify that height maximum and move them to a more appropriate section of the ordinance. Currently, they're buried underneath some of the special exception permit considerations that you all would take into account, so we're proposing taking that out, putting it in a location that makes more sense under the ordinance. They also provide flexibility and setback requirements under certain conditions. So we didn't wholesale take away any safety measures that will prevent these from falling onto adjacent properties. We've included that they have to demonstrate compliance with engineering and building standards. They have to include a failure mode and fall zone analysis. They have to specify required inspection, maintenance, and monitoring procedures, and then describe any design features intended to limit debris projection beyond the property. So that's something that would need to be submitted to us after they receive their approval of the special exception permit from you all before they receive their building permit from our department. If the engineering report demonstrates that debris will be contained within a smaller radius than the otherwise applicable setback, the zoning administrator may approve that reduced setback. Otherwise, they still have to meet that 200% and 100% from the property line. Any questions for you, or any questions for me on the proposed tax amendment? Before we move on to the special exception permit? I think you can make the action for all three, but I'll lean on legal counsel.
We'll lean on Mike for that. Can we act on all three, or should we act on them one at a time?
I would suggest you act on them one at a time for clarity's sake.
I thought you would say that. So.
Might have the approval language here.
Yes.
The proposed tax amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Good.
We have a motion to approve the tax amendment.
Second.
And a second. Any questions? Wait.
Madam Chair, did we have the public hearing?
No, we did not. Thank you, Mike.
We need to have a public hearing before we act on the tax amendment. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, Dr. Scott Horn.
I'm going to approve the telecommunication tax amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Tax amendment is approved.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. Now I'll back up, and we'll discuss the special exception permit. So before you tonight is a special exception permit. I've already read the legal advertisement. It is on the property seen before you on the screen, identified as 70-5B, which is the former landfill site. There is an aerial for you. The intended location of the facility is just about there. If you can see my mouse. It is a 225-foot-tall tower with, I think, a 10-by-10 fence around it to prevent anyone from accessing the site. It's intended for primarily emergency communications for fire EMS. It is, let me pull up my notes here, just to make sure I'm not missing anything. It's a 75-foot-by-75-foot barbed-wire fenced compound. It's actually a 10,000-square-foot leased area on a site that's roughly 2.24 acres. So it's just a very small portion of the site there. The conditions that we've included in the Planning Commission has recommended for approval is similar to the last SEP request that you considered tonight. Just the development of the property shall be undertaken in substantial conformance with the conceptual site plan. That noise generated by the development shall not violate provisions of the Bodotac County Noise Ordinance, and that all other specifications shall not exempt the project from local, state, or federal development requirements. Now, I can tell you a little bit more about the engineering and probably be lying to you, or I can ask Mr. Hinkle to come down if you have any questions for him. Otherwise, the requested action for you tonight is a motion for a commission permit and a motion for a special exception permit for the tower itself.
So we'll do those one at a time as well. So can we go back to the SEP slide so we can see the language?
Oh, yes.
There.
So the commission permit is listed first, I believe, but we can do the?
Let's do the SEP, because that's what you just presented. Yeah. And one question I have. It's close to the property line.
Yes, ma'am.
I assume that everything is fine with respect to setbacks, and we've had no input from the neighborhood.
Yes, so with the adoption of the tax amendments, it does fall into the line for the actual property lines. The neighbors, ourselves, I believe, and the national forest, we send these all out to everyone as required by state code. We didn't receive any.
And we haven't seen anything. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair, because the commission permit is a finding of substantial conformance of the comprehensive plan, and one of the primary considerations in adoption of a special exception permit is whether it conforms to the comprehensive plan, I suggest that we adopt the commission permit before the special exception.
Super. All right. This is the hardest part of the day. So we haven't had any motions or anything yet. That was just discussion. So is there any discussion or questions for Mr. McCoy regarding the commission permit? So let's open a public hearing for the commission permit. Is there anyone who would like to speak? We will close that public hearing. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the commission permit for the proposed telecommunications tower on the property of Bodotac County, which is substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan as decided by the Planning Commission.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The commission permit is approved. Now we will move on to the special exception permit. I will open a public hearing for that. Would anyone like to speak to the SEP? I will close the public hearing.
I would like to move to approve the special exception permit and telecommunication tower on the property of Bodotac County recommended by the Planning Commission with the following conditions listed.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That also is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I believe that's all I have for you tonight.
I think that concludes our public hearings. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
I think we've got a motion and a second to adjourn. Not that we need a vote, but all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much for your work today.
No, I want to stay here.